Tasha. How are you?
I'm well and yourself?
Give you the opportunity to address.
For that topic, I would suggest you go on mute and shut your. Board meeting starts.
Thank you, Virginia.
So I'm just gonna say again. Until we open the select board meeting.
I'm here to to be confirmed today by the by the select board.
Yep.
As the commissioner.
Welcome, Jose. That's that's a little bit later.
Quickly ask you if I spelled your name right.
Perfect. Thank you, Ken.
Yep, you're all set.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, so I appreciate everybody being patient with us. We've been sorting through some room details here to make this work. So we're at six oh four. I'm gonna call the order this March eighth, two thousand twenty one, select board meeting. Uh, or I should say tri board meeting to start. Um, and just a couple of quick housekeeping announcements pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand twenty orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law. Chapter thirty eight, section eighteen, and the subsequent order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information, Joe guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with the right and or requirement to attend. This meeting may be found at the town's website at www.chelmsfordma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch this meeting may do so by accessing the Chelmsford Telemedia website at www.chelmsfordtv.org. No one person attends. The members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event they're unable to do so despite best efforts, we'll post on the town's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive recording of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. That being said, I just want to also make everyone aware that um everything that goes in the chat box, uh, whether it's a private chat between two members or the public chat is part of the public record. And if anybody does a written records request, your chats are part of that record request. So just keep that in mind for anything you're putting in the chat boxes. All right, with that, we'll start with the we'll call the order. Um, so we're gonna start the general meeting for the um school committee with the town moderator. John, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I call to order the me joint meeting between the select uh board and the um school committee. I note for the record that there is a quorum for both boards and um I will uh take uh recommendations for the uh uh board, uh, the position that's open on the Neshoba Valley Technical High School uh school committee. Do I have any nominations?
I'll nominate Sam Polton.
And do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations? At this point, uh, Mr. Polton, since you're the uh sole candidate, I will give you an opportunity to address the joint board. Before the vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, uh, members of uh the select board, uh, school committee. Thank you very much for giving me uh the opportunity to continue on the uh Neshoba School Committee representing Chelmsford. I hope that you'll agree that uh we have one of, if not the, best vocational technical schools in the Commonwealth. And uh, it has truly become uh totally integrated over the last uh three or four years with the Chelmsford Public Schools. So I can confidently say that uh Neshoba is now uh another member of the Chelmsford uh school community, and I hope that you agree with me on that, too. Because no one else uh has been nominated, I'll save us all a lot of time by not going into uh any uh specifics except to say uh if there is anything that any one of us can do, please don't hesitate to get in touch with us, uh, your members on the uh Neshoba School Committee. Certainly, I'm open to uh any suggestions that either board might have on how to make Neshoba a better uh school as we continue our uh course toward excellence. We're in our fiftieth year. COVID prevented us from having the big celebration, but I think we'll have it next year. And uh I would appreciate your vote, even though I'm the only nominee, I'd appreciate your vote and uh also appreciate uh your allowing me to continue this labor of love because I truly enjoy representing Chelmsford on Neshoba. And uh, very, very proud of our students, our staff, and our superintendent, Dr. Kitchen. And uh, I look forward to a terrific town meeting where uh we're gonna continue um showing Chelmsford uh just what a gem they have. Uh, if you have any questions at all, I'd be glad to answer them. Otherwise, uh, I hope my actions have earned me your vote, and I know Ms. Wong just uh has been at just about every school committee meeting as the uh select board's liaison, and uh we truly uh appreciate having her.
Dr. Polton, are there anyone who has any questions for uh for the candidate? There being none, uh, it's probably just easy if if uh um the people who uh I'll I'll go through the school committee first. Um, if you are in favor of um the appointment of Mr. Polton, please raise your hand. That's probably the easiest way. Okay, it's unanimous. And the um select board, if you would raise your hand. It's unanimous as well. Uh, at this point, congratulations, Mr. Polton. Uh, look forward to your serving another term. And uh, I will uh adjourn, uh, seek a motion to adjourn the uh the meeting. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Thank you very much.
I'll make a motion during the meeting.
A second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Thank you very much.
All right, so with that, we'll uh move to our public service announcements.
So the first announcement is for the local election, which is on Tuesday, April sixth, two thousand twenty one. The polls will be open from seven AM to eight PM. And the last day to register to vote for the local election is March seventeenth. Anyone who will be eighteen years of age by April sixth can register to vote by March seventeenth. Um, if you need an absentee ballot, the clerk's office asks that you please request one by March twenty ninth, so there's sufficient time to mail them out and for you to get them back by election day. And for more information and links to the applications, you can reference the Secretary of State's website. There's also a link in the announcement to the list of candidates, and you can find them on the town website. Um, with that, I did reach out to the organizations that typically schedule candidates' nights or debates, and I did hear back from one, so I'll add that to this public service announcement. The Chelmsford Chapter of the League of Women Voters is planning a candidate's night to be broadcast and recorded by Chelmsford Telemedia on Thursday, March twenty fifth, at seven thirty PM. And I did not hear back from any of the other organizations.
Sam Polton's raising his hand. Sam, saying you wanna speak about yours?
If I'm allowed to jump in, we have not uh determined the uh the date, but we will tomorrow. Uh, speaking to Chelmsford Telemedia, but as we've done in the past, the Chelmsford Democratic Town Committee in uh conjunction with nine eighty WCAP uh is going to have a candidate's night. It'll be broadcast on Chelmsford Telemedia and simulcast on uh nine eighty WCAP break.
Uh, Paul, is those are scheduled? Is that something we could just list on the town website for people?
Yes, I I know.
Thank you.
I'd like that. Thank you.
Ken, the next is the introduction of candidates, and I was gonna let you moderate that.
Yep, thank you. I was just making a note here to get the cam, make sure the candidates' nights get posted uh for the debates. Um, so with that, we'll uh we're gonna open it up to the candidates that are running for uh an office, and I'm just gonna, I I mean, I'm just gonna go in order of the uh the way they signed into the uh breakout room. So the first one up is Deirdre Conley. Uh, and we're gonna just try to keep this uh to, I think, two minutes and just to bio, um, and keep it not political. If I hear someone getting political or or going on an offensive, we're gonna tune it down and move along. So I will turn it over to you, Deirdre.
Thank you very much, Ken. So I want to introduce myself. I'm Deirdre Conley. I'm um running for the planning board. And um, by way of introduction, I'm a physician in town. I have a um practice here in Chelmsford, primary care practice. I moved here twenty years ago with my husband and our then four small children. We picked the town instead of the other towns we were considering due to the quality of the schools as well as the proximity to our employment, um, and also the access to Boston, but with a small-town feel. The town reminded me of Shrewsbury, um, which is where I grew up. You might want to ask why a physician would want to be on the planning board. Um, I'm not an engineer. I'm not an architect. I'm not a developer. I have nothing to do with real estate. I don't really have an agenda. I was recently an observer and also a um a butter to an oversized development that was proposed in the town center. I opposed that development because I felt it didn't fit with the character of the town, and um eventually that application was denied. Um, I think in part due to a twenty-five-hundred signature petition that I, with a couple other um center residents, co-wrote, um, at least in part, certainly. During the course of this process, I saw some things I didn't understand that happened um in before the planning board and some things I didn't agree with. And I realize the importance of the planning board uh to the evolution of the town. Um, with that in mind, I would like to um acknowledge that part of the thing that I saw as important was also the voice of the residents and the voice of the townspeople um as it pertained to the evolution and development of the town. And I would like to try to be a common sense advocate for the neighborhoods, for the community, for the um town residents, and I would respectfully ask for one of your three votes for the position of planning board on April sixth.
Thank you, Deirdre. And with that, we will uh the next up is Latasha.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Latasha Dixon, and I am one of the candidates for the Chelmsford Select Board. I'm currently serving on the Diversity, Racial Equity and Inclusion Committee as the vice chairperson. And I'm also a resident um here in Chelmsford for nearly three years. For me, I decided to run for the Chelmsford Select Board because we are the policymakers, the leaders of the community. We represent um Chelmsford and its values to uh Massachusetts as a whole. And I am here to serve my community. Um, this will be my first time in a political office if I'm elected. So there will be a lot to learn, but I'm one of those type of people who has that desire to learn, desire to bring people together. And um, I want to seek um Chelmsford to continue to grow, to be an innovator for the um northern middlesex county. I would appreciate one of your two votes on April sixth. Thank you.
Thank you, Latasha. And then with that, we'll go to Mark.
Yeah, I think I'm unmuted.
You're unmuted.
Great. Well, good evening, and thank you for inviting me. And I guess a Zoom hello to Latasha and George. I'm not sure if April joined us or not. I couldn't see down in the blocks, but so I'm Mark Carata, select board candidate on the upcoming April sixth ballot. My wife, Joanne, and I have been in town for thirty-three years. Our two adult children, Holly and Matt, both graduated from Chelmsford High. During their school years, as many parents are, we were quite involved with our children's education and attended many events, open houses, and meetings throughout the years. I also coached softball, Little League baseball, and CYBL. Coaching over the years was a great experience. All of these activities certainly allowed us to get to know many families in town and immerse ourselves into the community. I've been a member of the Chelmsford Zoning Board of Appeals for the past ten years and currently serve as vice chairman. Serving on ZBA has allowed me to better understand the needs within our community. In this role, I have had the pleasure of meeting many of our residents, those I served with, and those that have come before the board with applications for things like limited accessory apartments, uh, an appeal, or an applicant that needed to add rooms to support their growing family. I've also sat on several several forty B comprehensive permits, which bring along their own different and separate set of challenges. The ZBA has given me an opportunity to further to read further into the Chelmsford zoning code and other Massachusetts governing documents when considering applications as they come before the board. It's been both a challenge and a rewarding experience. I also believe that my background as a former pharma executive and officer of a publicly traded company with an will be an asset to the select board in this role. I collaborated with my management team colleagues and with our board of directors as we were.
Oh, I lost you, Mark.
True diverse management team. It drive the business toward greater economic from the startup stage through commercialization, profitability, and acquisition. My leadership responsibility, accountability, and transparency are skills that I will bring to the select board and when working with the town manager and the other boards and committees in town. I would like to add that I'm a proud United States Air Force veteran and conclude by thanking those in towns that have urged me to run and supported my candidacy. I will also mention that you can find me on Facebook at Carata Select Board twenty twenty one. Thank you again for this opportunity to connect with you days, and after considering your options, that you will vote for me for one of the two open select board seats on April sixth. And have a great night.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I don't see anyone else here.
Yeah, Ken, we have three. You you've got George, John Souza, and William Sonoski.
Thank you, Virginia. Why can I not find him on my list? All right, I got, well, I found William Sonoski here. I'm gonna unmute him.
It is.
Good evening.
Uh, good evening. My name is uh Bill Sonoski, and I'm a candidate for the Board of Health. I've been a Chelmsford resident for the past forty-seven years, and I'm a retired pharmacist and a veteran of the Massachusetts Army National Guard. Most of my career in healthcare has been in the public sector with the Department of Veterans Affairs. I was responsible for managing a number of complex, high-volume pharmacy dispensing systems over the years. During my time at the VA, I developed a number of skills in administration, project management, logistics, federal contracting, disaster planning, and compliance with federal and state regulations, just to name a few. And I think those tools will be useful as a member of the Board of Health. Since my retirement in two thousand and eleven, I've stayed active in healthcare as a member of the Upper Merrimack Valley Medical Reserve Corps. I think I'd be a good fit for the board, and I look forward to uh working with it.
Thank you, Bill. And what we got on here?
George Dixon and John Souza.
Got it. I don't know. I miss George. Um George, I'm gonna hold you till last. John, you wanna talk?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Um, I was uh planning to speak to the board on under reports and presentations, but I did not plan to address uh the board as a candidate for office, but thank you for that opportunity. I appreciate it.
All right, thanks, John. And George?
Thank you. Excuse me. My name is George Dixon, and I'm a candidate for reelection to the select board. I've lived in Chelmsford for over seventy years. Uh, I am completing my fourth term as a member of the select board yeah, in town. And I've met, I've married to my wife, Terry, and we raised two grown children in in town here. I've served on many committees in town, such as the SOAR Commission, town meeting rep for almost twenty years, excuse me. I was chairman of the Affordable Housing Committee Committee where we reached over ten percent affordable units in town, which helped us keep our predator, uh, keep our predatory developers. Uh, I've also served seventeen years on the Paul Center Board and ten years on the Greater Lowell Boys and Girls Club. Excuse me. Um, I believe transparency and approachability are two very important assets for a select board member. In my last three campaigns, I've been asked what I felt was important for the town of Chelmsford. And my answer was to get more people involved in town government. I want to thank the our other three candidates who are running for the select board for stepping up and participating in the in this election. I also hope that many watching this program will entertain joining a committee this uh running for an office in the future. The more people that get involved, uh, the better it is for the town. So uh with that, I respectfully ask for one of your two votes on April sixth. Thank you very much.
Thank you, George. All right, do we get everybody? I think that's it. All right. With that, we'll move on to uh open session. Anybody would like to address the board in open session? Now's your chance.
Um, I I do want to make an announcement regarding town meeting, if I may. Uh, I have uh discussed this with um the town manager and um uh several other people in town. And uh, we are going to, uh, I will appear on uh April twenty-sixth at seven thirty at the Senior Center to announce that uh town meeting will be continued until June twenty-first. The reason is because I'm hopeful that uh enough town meeting reps, if not all of them, uh, will have been vaccinated by that point. It seems like it's a a real, a real strong possibility. And uh, and uh, at that point, I'm hopeful uh to to indicate that we will uh resume our meetings at the Senior Center. If not, then we will resume at uh the um uh, we will, we will have town meeting at the uh high school gym. Uh, but by June twenty-first, uh, I believe all the students will no longer be um attending regularly so that we um we, if we have to have a second or even a third session, it will not be uh a a major problem for for the uh staff at the schools. I do have a a witness who will accompany me on on April uh twenty-sixth, so that should be just very quick. Does if anyone has any questions or concerns, I will entertain them at this point.
Um, Mr. Moderator, would you, um, I I guess, could I provide an input for consideration?
Absolutely.
So, um, I understand why we delayed till the end of June last year. Um I'm just wondering if it would be worth looking at an interim date, like potentially a May date. And then if that doesn't pan out, then we delay till the end of June. And the the reason that I say that is we were able to have the fall town meeting as scheduled, even though the school was in session. Um, I think there's a lot of very meaty topics on the spring town meeting agenda. And um, I just get concerned about waiting until right before the fourth of July to do that. If um, if we go past the end of June, then we're on the one-twelfth budgeting. Um, I think too, last year, it felt like a little bit of a scramble when citizens petitions for fall town meeting were due in August, and we were, you know, turning the crank for that two uh, two months after spring town meeting. So I guess I'm just wondering if it would be worth thinking about a target date in May instead of delaying until the end of June. Um, the other thing that, and it was just a news story, but um if if we do start to experience immunity in the country, it sounds like people are trying to make plans to travel and see family. And I heard um, on one story that, like, most of the popular outdoor places are already booked for Memorial Day. So I think to just assume that people would be doing a traditional July Fourth and that going in past when school gets out might not might not be as safe an assumption as it has been in the past. But that was, that was just my thought, that there's just so much on this agenda. Maybe it would be worth thinking about an alternative week in May, and then if the situation with COVID is such that we want to go to June, we have that as a second date.
Well, well, I appreciate that, and and I did consider that, and I I will reconsider it again. I have gotten a lot of communications from town meeting reps who um, you know, were, who did not appear uh last year or uh because of their uh COVID nineteen concerns, and I want to make sure that we can have as much participation as possible. The other thing is that uh we will have twelve articles on the consent agenda, which will basically take a uh take a fair amount of of the um time involved. I cannot imagine us um proceeding more than three nights, uh, which would still uh finish on June twenty-eighth. Uh, so, but I will consider it, and and uh, if you want to discuss this in greater detail, I don't want to take up, I, you've got a lot going on in your meeting tonight. I You've got a lot going on in your meeting tonight. I didn't wanna take up a lot of time, but I certainly will be glad to hear from you and to discuss this with you.
John, I'm gonna probably share the opinion that Virginia just expressed because I don't know if I'll be able to make that June twenty first meeting. We had a travel voucher that was expiring at the end of June and I can't use it till my wife gets out of school as a teacher. And so my window was very tight there. So I already know that's the week we preliminary have plans booked and I'll be out of the state. So I'm, I kinda leaning with Virginia on that one, that if we could do like, even if it's not in May, we could just meet again and move it again, correct?
Well, we, we could, we could even meet earlier in June if necessary. I'm just trying to give the town meeting reps a sufficient opportunity to be vaccinated and and the rate that things are going. I, I think that that's, that's a real likelihood. And then I just wanna make sure that they have adequate time after vaccination to, to attain immunity. And so, but
Even, even earlier in June, the seniors will be out of the high school if that's the venue we have to use. So they'll, they'll already be depopulating by early June.
And that's why I'm saying I, I could move it up in June. That's not, you know, May may be a little too soon. But let me, let me talk to some people and find out. And if I hear from more people that the last week in June, I, I have no problem moving it a week or two up. Okay, that's not, not a concern and and we do, we will be. Go ahead, Ken.
Just to understand how the process works, if, if you meet in April and you have a witness to move it and let's say you move it to another date, are you, are you allowed to continually move it? So could you do three week increments and just keep moving it if we needed it?
Oh, yeah. I'm not sure that we, yeah, we, I could do that. It's, it's, you know, we wanna give as much notice to as many people as possible so that they, they know when, when, because I do know, as you said, there are some citizen petitions. I know that there are people who are gonna be wanting to attend and I don't wanna keep having them change their schedules as well as everybody else, but we could do that. I'm, I'm open to anything, so let me give it some thought and and we'll discuss it at a later date. Okay, we have time.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. It would be nice, John, to maybe consider it sometime in May or whatever.
Thank you. Well, we don't wanna do it, we don't wanna do it right around Memorial Day.
No.
Okay, so, so that week would be out. Okay, but thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Anybody else like to address the board in open session? I don't have anything in the chat. Oh, we don't have a chat room. They shut that down, I guess. And I don't see any hands up and nobody's turning on cameras and waving, so we'll move on to our committee vacancies.
Okay. As of today, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee has two vacancies. The CCA Advisory Committee has two vacancies and the Center Village Master Plan Implementation Committee has two. The Commission on Disabilities has one vacancy. The Community Action Program Committee has one vacancy. The Council on Aging has one vacancy as well as five associate member positions. The Cultural Council has one vacancy and the Energy Conservation Committee has two. The Holiday Decorating Committee has one vacancy and the Parade Committee is accepting all applicants for one-year terms. The Permanent Building Committee has one vacancy. The Personnel Board has one vacancy. The Public Celebrations Committee has five. The Recycling Committee has one. The Roberts Field Advisory Committee has one vacancy and the Tree Committee has two. If you're interested in serving on the Town Board or Committee, you can complete an application available on the town website where you can also contact the Town Manager's Office at tmoffice@chelmsfordma.gov nine seven eight two five zero five two zero two.
Okay. Thank you, Virginia. We'll move to our reports and presentations and we're gonna start off with, we're gonna have the Assistant DBW Director Steve Yarnley start with the forty, fifty four Richardson Road.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to give the board a brief update on, on what's going on. I know at the last meeting, we had just received the correspondence back from DEP. We've responded to those conditional approvals, if you will. Earlier today, they'd already received a phone call back from DEP in agreement with everything that we said. Minus one condition, they just wanted us to make sure we do enough investigation to try to determine the location of the old septic system. We have no records at DPW. Board of Health had no records. So basically, they want us to just do some exploratory test pits to try to locate the old leach field so we can get adequate sampling in that location. Everything else seems in accordance with the, what DEP has required us to do. We're gonna do a little bit of kinda homework on our own towards the end of this week. And then on Monday, the fifteenth, Western and Sampson will be mobilizing with the drilling contractor to start the installation of the monitoring wells. The two that are proposed to be across the street on North Chelmsford Waters property. One, I guess, doesn't seem to be too bad. The second location, I've reached out to Conservation, the Conservation Agent Katie to try to get a, an idea of what we can do with that one. We may have to hold off on that one and may have to approach. I mean, did you just hold off until we can get some approvals to cross the stream to get out that location? Or we may have to contact one of the residents just down the street on Richardson Road to see if we can access in through their property. But other than that, things are gonna start kinda moving pretty quickly. They're planning on being out there the entire week, next week, doing the installation of the monitoring wells. So after that, whatever needs to go on with them for the first round of sampling. And then for the contract we went into, there's a second round of sampling later in the summer. And then groundwater analysis, flow analysis and all that, so we can try to hone in on where and what our, our issue is in.
Are you gonna get a report from, another report from the DEP, Steve?
So after we submitted it today via MSDEP's website and also personally sent a copy over to John Fitzgerald, who's the lead on this with DEP. He called Paul McKinley from Western Sampson back within, within a half an hour. Was happy with our response. Again, just like I say, just that one kind of stress that we find the old leach field. Again, you know, I think we got a general idea where it might have been, is still. So we'll just have to do some, some test pits to hopefully locate that so we can satisfy their condition for adequate sampling.
Under the old pipe, I think it's still in.
When it was, I mean, we got a general idea again on the, the thought is it was on the office side of the building. You know, all I have is the sewer tie when the sewer was installed in nineteen ninety one for the property. Again, I can't find any records, anything we have. Board of Health had no record. You know, the building was built in the fifties and who knows if there was a record on it. No, I don't know. So we'll, we'll do what we can hopefully locate that. Everything else is pretty straightforward.
So Steve, the work that you said they'll start within the next week is that's part of this ninety six thousand dollar statement of work?
Correct.
Paul, can, can you explain to me again, how does that work in terms of funding where you, you have money to cover it and then win town meeting votes to cover it with the next fiscal year? Does the account get reimbursed or something like that?
No, we'll seek a supplemental appropriation at the town meeting to close out the fiscal year.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. And Bruce, I'm getting questions about like the water supply for the schools and things like that. Can you maybe just explain our, you're handling this through filtering or other technology right now?
All right, right now, can you hear me, Virginia?
Yes.
Yeah, right, right, right now, the, the plant, which wasn't designed, we have a problem with that, wasn't designed for the PFAS removal. But the carbon filters are taking it down to non-detex.
Okay.
So right, right now, the water's safe. You know, we, we do PFAS samples monthly and they all been coming at the twenty nanograms per liter. And matter of fact, I'm, this Wednesday, I'll be doing soil samples from sludge, which comes out of our treatment plant, so I'm getting results from that. But as far as the schools goes, water supply, it's, it's definitely safe. It's, it's under the non-detect. I'm not sure if that answered you.
It does. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions for the Assistant Director? All right, so Steve, whatever you move on to the next.
We're related to that, Mr. Chairman. We, we will, Town Council Paul Havy is drafting an access agreement that would, you know, formalize the town's ability to go on to the North Chelmsford Water District property and have the ability later on to do sampling. So basically, I'd need a vote from the board. And again, to keep this moving along would be to authorize me to sign such access agreement with the Water District upon submittal by Town Council.
Is this something you
And the Water Department have to agree with this, right?
Right.
Yes, both parties would sign off on the agreement.
We're, we're in full, we're in full agreement, Todd. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce. All right, that's why do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager to sign off on the access agreement for access to the adjacent North Chelmsford Water District property upon draft in agreement by Town Council and the North Chelmsford Water District.
A second motion.
Motion of second, all in favor, my roll call, Pat?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. All right, now we'll go to street acceptance with Steve.
Yep, again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is just another phase in our kinda annual program to, to clean up the streets around town that had never been accepted either. The process had never started or the process had started and was just never completed. This year, we have Seven Streets. And this is the, the first of a four-step process for acceptance of these streets. What this first step is, is a simple, simple step where the board makes their intention to accept these roads as a public way and then forward the letter on to the planning board. I appear before the planning board for their comments. Again, these streets have all been in existence for, for years, so it shouldn't be much of an issue, I would think. Hasn't been in the past with the twenty-four, twenty-five that we've done. After the board votes, I then come back to the Select Board prior to town meeting. From the earlier discussion, sounds like that might be a little bit of a moving target, so we'll schedule that. Once we finalize when town meeting's gonna be, this board authorizes the streets. And then the final step is the town meeting vote for acceptance.
Steve, I have a question for you quickly. Is Hazen Road Hazen Street? Cause I couldn't find that one on the map.
I had the same question.
No, I, I, I grew up there and we always called it Hazen Road, but I noticed that the street signs do say Hazen Street, so.
In the GPS and in the GIS system, it's labeled as Hazen Street. Unless there's something, something, is it near Concord Road, Steve?
Yeah, Concord Road, it cuts over to Lumbi out on Boston Road.
Yeah, I noticed the same thing Ken did.
I think every, every bit of documentation we have calls it Hazen Road. I don't, I can't figure out why the street sign would be different. Let me look it up real quick.
I mean, I, I just, as I was going through the streets, looking at them on, on Google Maps, it came up as Hazen Street. And I know we're having some confusion over Stedman Street, so before we make it official.
I know the people that live around this, they refer to it as Hazen Road, so that would be the preference if we get a choice.
Did you poll them, Pat?
I just know.
Trust me, I'm with the government. I'm here to help.
Right.
Yeah, again, I think like that, it's like what member Woj says, that we all know it is Hazen Road. So if that was an oversight on, on, on my part, then I apologize for that.
Yeah, I just wanted to be right.
Yep, no.
So you'll, you'll verify it and update it before it goes to the planning board if it needs to change?
Yeah, I, I can do that. And then obviously the documents that come back to you, to this board are currently just in draft form. So obviously, there's, there's an election in between and everything else, so we can certainly have it cleared up at that point.
So you don't, you don't need to vote tonight?
I just need you to read the motion for the Seven Streets to announce your intent to accept these streets. And then just somebody to, the chairman to authorize the letter to the planning board. And then I can, I can move on to that step.
So I, I move that we confirm our intent to accept either Hazen Road or Hazen Street, whichever the correct nomenclature is, Chamberlain Road, Tad McRoad, Tuttle Road, Twist Road, Oak Street and Maple Road as presented.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor, my roll call, Pat?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Steve, do you need anything else other than that or do you?
Just at some point, if, if you could authorize that letter to the planning board and I can take it from there.
Okay. Paul, I can, is that something that will get written up? You need me to stop it in time?
Oh, we can do it electronically.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. So next up, we have our wonderful Finance Director, John Souza. Little bond sale presentation for us, very exciting.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I just wanted to provide the board with a update on a planned bond, our next bond sale. It's planned for next month on April sixth. And just kinda give you a rough timeline of, of events with everything associated with that. Over the, over the fiscal, current fiscal year, we, we've had, we have three major projects that we've received prior to town meeting authorization. Just, just to run through those quickly with you. We have the fiscal year twenty-one capital improvement plan that was approved at two phases. Phase one and then the second phase in October. We also had the North Fire Station renovation project that was approved in October. And as well, we had the Warren Pole land acquisition that was approved at a special town meeting at, at last August. So if we add those three projects up, those total just over seven point five seven million. We also had a refunding opportunity come up recently. And you may recall, last May, things were very unstable in the bond market, but we were able to put a refunding together with, with the assistance of our municipal bond advisor, which saved the town a significant amount of money over, over the long term. And what we were doing there is we were refunding or refinancing some bonds that were issued back in twenty twelve and twenty thirteen. And we were only doing what they selected maturity, so it was only pieces, if you will, of those bonds because that, those are the only parts of those bonds where we could achieve some savings. This year, the call dates are coming up within the next ninety days or so for the remaining bonds that we were not able to refund. And for those that aren't familiar with bonds, a call date means that the issuer, which in this case is the town of Chelmsford, can call these bonds in, if you will, and then reissue new bonds at a lower interest rate. So we're looking at doing the, the remaining twenty twelve and twenty thirteen bonds and rolling that all together with this, this issuance. And right now, I mean, these things can change all the time, but at the current time, we're projecting savings on that ref, the new refunding that we're gonna do of about three hundred thousand or more. And the timeline is for this is that we'll be working over the next several weeks. The town manager, myself, town accountant will be, you know, holding a conference call with Standard and Poor's, will be gathering all the legal documents. Right now, the sale date is set for April sixth. After that date, after that sale takes place, Bond Council would prepare, you know, you're used to You know, you're used to seeing all the legal documents that come with that. I would then come back to the select board at your meeting on April twelfth, seeking approval. And similar to last year, any of the documents that we can do electronic, you know, approval, I will do my best to do that. And then the only other thing to mention is that as we get closer to the end of this fiscal year, in late May and June, there are two short term thirty day notes that I'll be working on issuing. We will not have to go through a big, a formal bond auction or sale. These are two smaller notes that we can do through the State House Notes Program, similar to what we did last year. And one of them you see, you're familiar with is the Williamsburg Riverbank Project. The Assistant DPW Director has been working on that. Unfortunately, we have not received any, any update from FEMA or any progress on receiving the final payment in the closeout. So barring the unforeseen, if we receive the final payment before fiscal year, and then I will not have to issue this note. But if we do not receive it before June, then to be on the safe side, I'll need to issue that note. So that's, just want to give you a brief update and overview on the next bond issuance. And if anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
John, I have a couple of quick questions for you. When you did your, your projected savings of three hundred and thirty thousand, was that this week? Two weeks ago, when did you do that number?
Actually, that was just about last week, I want to say, within the last five to seven days roughly.
So the run in bond yield, that hurt us at all?
It's, it's hard to say, I mean, these are going to be tax exempt, so it doesn't, it may not track exactly. I mean, interest rates are definitely, you know, people, some people are concerned that interest rates will move up, that we may see signs of inflation in the future. So it's definitely something to keep our eye on. That's why we want to kind of, normally in a normal fiscal year, what we would do is, we would usually issue bonds in June. In this case, we already have these things that we, the projects that we need to issue bonds for before the end of the year. And the refunding, it seems like a great time to try to get this done within the next month, so.
Okay, what's, what's the interest rate on them, the twelve and thirteens that you're calling?
They vary, Ken, I would have to, I can research that and I could send that to the board. It, it, the coupon rate varies by, by fiscal year. I don't have that in front of me at the present time, but.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll check in with you, don't worry about it. All right, thank you. Anybody else have questions for? For John? Okay, thanks, John.
Thank you.
All right, so that brings us to.
John, do you want to talk about the acceptance of the conservation parcel?
Piece of land.
Sure. So the, you, you, I know you may have all received the, the background information. So we had a resident that contacted the town manager's office and had expressed a desire to donate a parcel of land. It's a small triangular shaped parcel of land off of Chelmsford Street. Actually, is down near a portion of Route three. It's, the, the parcel is about six thousand five hundred feet in square feet in area. It has a, an excess value of one thousand eight hundred dollars, there's a diagram of it. It's, it's, it was of no use really to the, the current donor because it, it's surrounded by, it was basically landlocked, it's surrounded. One of the things that, and so the, the current owner had expressed an interest to the town manager that he would like to donate it because he really can't do anything with this land. He's tried to, to sell it to various individuals in the past and there's just not much interest. One of the things that makes it somewhat attractive to the town is that it abuts a a piece of town owned land, which is actually right above that triangle that you see right, yes, right there. And so it would have, it would have butted another piece of town owned land. We contacted town council, Paul Haverty and his associate who researched the parcel and advised us that the current owner could donate this parcel of land to the Conservation Commission if they agree to accept it. And that gift would request the approval of the select board. So just to let everyone know, town council researched it, there are basically six individuals that need to sign a quitclaim deed to, to deed the ownership over to the town. As of today, five of those six individuals, it's all in, all within the Delgarian family. Five of six individuals have returned the signed deeds to my office and we're anticipating the last one soon. So the reason for bringing this before you tonight is just to explain the background on the land donation, the reason for the request. The Conservation Commission voted early in February, at the February second meeting, I believe it was unanimously to accept this donation of this land parcel. And so what we'd be seeking tonight is your approval or your acceptance of this gift of land to the town of Chelmsford.
So John or Paul, before I take the screen down, I went into the GIS system and I was able to click on this piece here dash two, and it shows that the town owns that. But I couldn't click on the dash one, who owns the dash one property?
I would have, I have to research that with our assessor, I had not.
I, I just, I just physically wasn't able to click on it in the GIS system, so I'm just curious who owns it.
I'm sure the highway right away is to the right there, that's the, so that's that side there. Yeah, that's the highway, that's Mast Dot.
Thank you. So, so you, you need a motion, does anybody else have any discussion? I move to accept the donation of parcel fifty-three dash two one eight dash three from Stephen Delgarian to the Chelmsford Conservation Commission as presented.
Second.
My motion is second, all in favor, Pat?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, that, we'll start with the, anything else, John, you all said?
No, that's all, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. With that, we're going to turn it over to, for our business update to our we'll have our business development director, Lisa Maroney, give us an update of what's going on in town.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Maroney, Director of Business Development. I am here to give you an update. And should I put up my PowerPoint, Ken, or? I haven't.
I can do it right now, if you want.
Whatever, whatever's easiest. Okay.
Is that working?
Perfect, I think so, let me see. Try my. So do I, do I have controls for page down? How do we?
Well, let me just, if you want to give me two seconds, and let me see if I can. I don't think I can make you a host, I don't know if Pete's listening and, Pete, can you give Lisa host abilities?
Or I could just share my screen and head over to my own PowerPoint.
Well, I don't think I can share your screen without making you a co-host.
Okay.
And because we're in a breakout room, I'm not sure I can do that.
We could just do the old fashioned, the old fashioned way.
Yep.
Guys, this is, guys, this is, screen sharing is on because we've, we've insulated ourselves, so everyone has the ability to share a screen.
Okay. So Lisa, you take over then.
Okay, here we go. How's this?
Perfect.
Okay, excellent. Thanks for your patience, as much as we all do Zoom all the time. PowerPoint presentations is another whole adventure, so. Okay, so this is my agenda for this evening, and I'm trying to provide you a great overall view of work that I'm doing from small business to big, big business, as well as economic development initiatives and and all across the board of the spectrum of, of work I'm doing. So this is the agenda for the most recent update. You may know or have already heard about the Route one twenty-nine Marketing and Branding Pursuit. The goal is to create and reimagine a office park from the eighties towards a modernized technical attraction area for business. So with that comes branding and marketing. And we are coming out of the gate with a LED double sided electronic sign paid for by a grant that was given to us from the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development. Those funds are put aside and ready to go while we work through the due diligence process. But you can see here, that is one rendition of the, of the sign. It has an illuminated top portion of the sign. And that image area that you see there is just a sample of one picture. It is not what we're going to be showing on that sign. It won't be a complicated, very busy map. It will be something that is more overall, overall promotion of the crossroads area. But that image there at the bottom of the screen is meant to give you an idea of capability of the sign and the, the color. You know, the technology behind that. We've been working with the Chelmsford DPW, I am in contact with Mast Dot. We realize National Grid will be involved. We have spent quite a bit of time out there on site. And the most optimal location comes back to the traffic island that you can see closest to three thirty Bill Ricker Road. And so that's a little bit of the aerial image of that, where Mill Road and Bill Ricker Road meet up. There's a traffic island, it, it has a rotary sign on it right now. And we're looking to target that area for a double sided electronic sign. So also through the grant, we have hired Commoin Associates, they are economic development specialists to help guide us with what it takes to reimagine in an office park, six hundred acre office park. And this is part of where we're at with an action plan on how to reintroduce this area to the business world. These are some of the steps and, and high level, high level action plan. Right now, we are working on business attraction, you see some of that happening, we'll talk about it a little bit more in my presentation. We are working on physical improvements of the sign. And the major stakeholders are very engaged, very interested in the work that we're doing. They are supporting these efforts, they feel that we are right on the mark with what's needed to happen out there. And the goal is, as we move into phase two, the stakeholders or major employers will collaborate on funding to create some directory signs at each of the major intersections so that there's more awareness of where these large employers are throughout the space. So these are what you're seeing here on this screen are just some of the immediate actions that are coming up very soon that I've been working on. Picture of the action plan, it's three or four pages long, this is just a quick image of it. It's available for anyone to view if you're interested. But it's, this is the level of detail that we're working on with things that are happening with this plan that's been developed through Commoin Associates. And just wanted to show a, a quick image of, of how this structure is coming together. Not a typical business, business plan, as you will. But in per se, that we are the municipality, we don't own land out there, we don't own properties out there. But we are creating a, you know, an activity approach and an, an action approach of, of how to influence and gain partnership and create change out there with the property owners and the stakeholders. And, and these are some of the steps that we're going through. This is a list of the engaged stakeholders. They are coming to monthly meetings that I've been hosting with them. And it's very encouraging, they're, they're really responding and showing up. We are building our first newsletter to come out, it'll be a monthly newsletter provided by a collaborative effort of information from the businesses, information that I'm aware of that's happening. And I'll be given updates as well as what we're calling a partner report, where each, each month, one of the, of the businesses in the crossroads will provide a five minute update to the rest of the group. They're all still actually meeting each other. They haven't had a platform where we're at this level in front of each other, engaging in local initiatives and local conversations. So they're very excited about it, and some of them are reaching out to me individually with more interest to engage in a one-on-one basis. And it's really catching on and it's taken a little bit, but as you can see, this is an impressive list of a combination of major employers, as well as service providers, brokers, realtors. It's a good combination of a group that is, they really believe and have faith in the work that we're doing to turn around this area. And some of that shows by the empty square footage has been cut in half in the first two and a half years, including COVID setbacks. And we are now, which I'll talk about further in my presentation, we're, we're now still really seeing a lot of positive signs that there's great things coming up in the pipeline for projects in the, in the one twenty-nine corridor. Also on my list here is site tours, which we're beginning to line up. Once I have confirmation, certainly welcome to invite you to some site tours in, in the crossroads businesses, as well as the discussion of a contractor's tour. That's meeting some good reception. So we've been talking about what that means, getting into the empty space so that we can create some awareness. I think the space shows much better than expected, given that it's been vacant for a little bit, but I think the properties are still pretty competitive with the region. More so that Chelmsford's been pretty aggressive and assertive in jumping out there and putting the crossroads pursuit in front. And I'm starting to get calls from other communities that are looking, looking to learn a little bit how we're going about this and how we're making it happen. So these are all positive signs and good feedback that's been, that's been coming all throughout last year and, and leading into this year as well. And another little snapshot of what Commoin is providing us for the economic development specialties that they do. So we're in phase one, as you can see, we're getting into task three and four, beginning the marketing and outward reach and the push of information out there. Phase two kind of elevates and, and, you know, exacerbates some of that marketing communications, sales leads, business intelligence, things like that. So we're nearing the end of phase one. And just discussing how to approach phase two, but I wanted to show you a bit about what these deliverables are in, in regard to the, the work that we're doing with Commoin. I often get, get asked a little bit about how we've gone about this. So this is a, a high level view of what, what that entails. So this list keeps growing by the day. I, you know, it was great to put it all together in one shot, so you can clearly see what's been happening. Tried to, tried to look back to see when the first few businesses opened. There was so much going on during the reopening of the economy with COVID. I don't exactly know precisely, I know Chelmsford Nutrition opened a bit before the holidays, maybe November. But it's a great, impressive list. And if you look at that, you can see it's a combination of retail and restaurants, and they're all throughout town. And I think what that shows is that there's demand, there's a lot of demand in town for commercial sites. We know that, we have a low vacancy rate of storefronts and commercial sites. So I just find it so exciting and we are working hard to find a way, working through the details to reintroduce ribbon cutting events and do a hybrid of a virtual ribbon cutting where the majority of the invitations will be done through Zoom with a small group of us on site at the business with social distancing. We've been talking with the Board of Health, I am working closely with Chelmsford Telemedia so that we could have a live ribbon cutting for those to join in and still cut the ribbon and have that business experience, that welcoming from the town and from the business community, but also give them. but also give them that that snippet of a recording that they can use further in their marketing and promotion of their business. So we've been working with Chelmsford Telemedia, as I said. And the whole idea of the virtual is to just keep it convenient. Fifteen, twenty five minutes, something in that range, fun, high energy, engaging. But helping the public be aware of how much is really still happening in the economy in a positive way. So hopefully soon you'll be receiving a video, a virtual Zoom link for ribbon cutting. And I'm pretty excited about it and the businesses are thrilled. So we're starting to line those up and get some dates on the calendar. And it takes a little bit of logistics to to do some of that. But it's a great, it's a great listing for small business openings. This is for me, an equally impressive list of large business happenings. Some of it might look a bit familiar, but we all know Thermo Fisher is just really helping us put us on the map right now with their purchase of the building. They purchased two twenty Mill Road with a private investment into the site of a minimal fifty million dollars. They've recently pulled permits for that site. The permit fees were one point two million dollars for the work that they're doing there. Just a just a great turnaround for what we've been trying to do in the crossroads. And they're going to be employing two hundred and eighty people in the town of Chelmsford at this site. And we, you know, I'm working really hard to get more of that information pushed out into the into the channels that we have for for free avenues of of news announcements. Same for Triton Systems. They have a press release that's going to be coming out very soon. They are offering site tours while they're under construction. They do expect to be open, if not already, very, very soon. They have a headcount of one hundred and fifteen people at Triton. They're located at three thirty Bill Ricker Road. They're taking the second floor and portion of the first floor. Encompass Human Services, you'll know them as Lifelinks. They have gone through a transition. They have partnered with Class out of Lowell. And then they renamed to Encompass Human Services. They are located on Omni Way, for Omni Way. And believe it or not, they employ three hundred and ten full time people at their location. And they're very involved in the work I'm doing with the crossroads, very engaged. Their marketing department is really contributing a lot to help guide and provide feedback and partnership with what we're doing. And it's it's it just feels like we're doing all the right things. You just need a little more time and we're going to have a lot of great things come through. Same with Zoll Medical. This was out a little while ago, but they purchased their buildings. They are now owners and stakeholders in the crossroads. They employ over a thousand people at Zoll Medical. And they have reached out to me and offered us a site tour. So I'll be touring Zoll Medical on March thirtieth at eleven AM. And anyone, any one of the town officials are welcome to join me on the site tour. Pretty excited about that. It's a great facility. They're doing such important work, like manufacturing in the medical industry. So it really helps us to gain some identity for advanced technologies in the life sciences and the other sciences. Sterling Corporation, they employ one hundred and fifty people. They recently purchased very expensive tractor trailer, large trucks specific for life science and biotech moves. Businesses that are moving around either the country. They do international moves, but doing a lot of work in the Boston area. And their headquarters is based in the Chelmsford Crossroads. They have been very engaged in the work I'm doing. And they are launching a new website. And we talk quite often. And they really are connecting me with some businesses that are looking to either downsize or need a different type of space or perhaps don't need the premier locations that they had at one time. So it's a great, it's a great partnership. You know, I really, I really appreciate their support. Ribbon Neck Road Properties, we are in very serious negotiations. Very significant through the process right now for purchase. They are doing due diligence and we are working with some brokers. They are not wanting to be identified at this time. But it's another indicator that we are about to, you know, crest the hill with cutting our space even more in half. Those properties are two hundred thousand square foot buildings on nine plus acres. Plus, they're interested in the five acre parcel that is also owned by the same. So that's going to be a major project should we get to be the final chosen location for what they're looking for. But they are pretty aggressive and spending money doing research and due diligence. So we're we're very much on our way to having a project happen at that location. That's very exciting. Thirty three Galen Ave, there's strong interest in that industrial location. Potential for seventy jobs to come in. The business coming out of the Boston area. And that building is thirty six thousand square feet. And, you know, not, not a small building, not a big building, but a great location. And I don't expect it to be empty for very long. We're we're working with them in partnership and trying to provide them all that they need to understand the area and what the resources are for for their business. They haven't publicly disclosed themselves yet either. Two seventy eight Mill. I'm so excited about this property. The owner has decided to identify that site as the Crossroads Plaza, which is great because it's tagging on to all of the marketing that we've been trying to push forward. And that is a mixed use site. It is nearing the end of construction. They are getting a lot of interest for food amenities. Three different food sources are looking at that location. And so that's pretty exciting to bring in more food amenities into the crossroads area to serve the businesses and the workforce that comes in. And one ninety seven Bill Ricker Road at the corner of Bill Ricker and in C N C A, which was once sold and back on the market, which is now under deposit again on agreement for more potential of mixed use and potential business amenities with the site that also is eligible for drive through. So that's pretty exciting stuff for large business happenings. It's a quick view of my business development page. It's really tough to put all of this down on one page and getting ready to kind of just put it out live. I'm getting some criticisms from internal, getting some feedback and some guidance on from my colleagues and my coworkers in Town Hall so that I am creating a succinct and resourceful and helpful page that intrigues people to want to start more conversation with me or reach out to me. So getting ready to kind of put this page up live. You should see it and hopefully by the end of this week or next week. So this is really big news. I've been working with the Chelmsford Board of Health and we have finalized and reached the highest biotech rating possible in the state. It's a platinum rating. And it is something that is designated to us from the Mass Biotech Council. And only nine percent of the state is platinum or thirty two municipalities, as you can see in my bullets here. But I just really wanted to quickly explain to you what it takes to reach platinum level. And you have all received a copy of the press release as well. So the levels are bronze, silver, gold and platinum. And to be on a bronze level, you have to have public infrastructure, public water and sewer. You have to have zoning that allows biotech. And you have to have an identified point of contact in your municipality to be considered at the bronze level, which is the entry level. For silver, you have to accomplish all of the bronze requirements and then identify areas in your in your community that can accommodate biotech, either for land or existing structures. You have to have a procedure in place that convenes a technical review process or a a a site plan review process of which we do. We do have expedited permitting. That's a requirement for silver. And we do have identified growth areas and available square footage, which is required for the silver rating, which is the Chelmsford Crossroads. The gold status, which is all of the silver and bronze requirements, but also requires to have a biotech company operating in your community, of which we do in the crossroads as well. So to achieve platinum, it is an additional step for the for the Board of Health to acknowledge the National Institute of Health Guidelines for biotech. And it's a documentation process and you have to valid verify that you have at least twenty thousand square feet of available square footage for more biotech growth, of which we do. So we have reached platinum status. And I'm getting great feedback. And I know that Mass Life Science Center and Mass Biotech Council and other state agencies were very happy to hear the the update. It doesn't adjust any of the process through permitting and the vetting out as typical through the planning board and conservation and and other typical projects that come in. It doesn't adjust any of that. It basically acknowledges the National Institute of Health Guidelines. There's no enforcement that happens by the town. That happens between the business and the NIH. So that's independent of us. So this is a great achievement.
Congratulations, Lisa.
Thank you so much. So in addition to business development, I have a few other economic development types of of things that I'm doing. And this is one of them. Age friendly Chelmsford. You may know that there's been a volunteer group. We call them the core group. There was about thirty of us. We were getting together monthly to help the town get organized in their approach to becoming age friendly Chelmsford. And part of that included, you know, awareness and promotion of such a program. And what does this mean and what is it all about? So this project was was intended to create interest, to learn more and connect with the municipality. This is a publicly owned piece of land. And it's a great size, too small to be like a full public park. But just the right amount to create some beautiful space and some awareness of what's happening. So we're going forward to create a pocket park of what you call a pocket park. And I talked about this a few times over the month, over the times. But this is an update. We've we've got sponsors for the benches and getting ready to put out a campaign for more sponsorship for the landscaping. Excuse me. And so the layout has been done by FS Greenery, Four Seasons Greenery. They located in the Chelmsford Crossroads about a year and a half ago or so. And they were very generous to come out and design a professional landscaping plan that allows the the little pocket park to always have color and to always have something in bloom throughout the growing season. And for some of us that have experienced what it means to spend time with an older loved one that's maybe, you know, having some some difficulties. This park was meant to just create a little walking path. You know, some sometimes you it looks like a thirty second walk in the park. But really, the goal is to be able to go outside with a loved one, sit in a little space, have an excursion, sit on the bench, come out to the park. It's not going to be a highly visited park. Blake Funeral Home is completely understanding if there's one or two cars in their parking lot that do not impede with their services. And that's the thought of this space, to just come out and enjoy some beautiful open space for a little while. And so on the next page, you'll see what I'm getting ready to prepare for. Chelmsford Telemedia made me this great flyer. We have big plans for this little park of which we do. So this is the layout. It's just a really kind of a rough overview. But what you're looking at is two hundred and seventy four plants in there. It I'm hoping that we can create the landscaping in one growing season or a single phase. We can do it in two phases or more if needed for the funding process. But this is what it looks like. And you can see by this plant list, we're talking about large established plants. They're not going to be six inches or a foot tall. It's not going to take two years for it to grow in. These are significant sized plants that initially the quote that you'll see is from FS Greenery through their through their nursery. I've been working with them to kind of do that collaboration with the Chelmsford Crossroads. But this is, you know, this is the plant list. It's pretty significant. And should it be built this way and planted in one in one phase, it'll be extraordinary upon the day it's finished planting. I'm hoping to be approaching the gardening clubs and, you know, getting some help with planting. If if some of the funding is allowed to do this in phases or a single phase, I'm hoping to be reaching out to the gardening gardening groups and landscaping clubs for help. Choking. I apologize for that. So this total design, two hundred and seventy four plants, comes to a total of thirteen thousand dollars. Pretty significant. It's perennial. It'll come back every year. It'll continue growing. There's some green, there's some green greenery. You see the spruces, the boxwoods, those will be green all year round. It'll look beautiful in every season. So that's the hope and that's the goal. I'm open to talking with individual families or corporations where we'll see where this goes. So this page is meant to just give an update of some of the other initiatives that I've that I've been working on. You know, in talking with all of the employers, there's this continual need for workforce development. They're always on a quest and a search for skilled skilled workers for their particular industry. They're always at college recruitments that they go to. But we thought that we would develop a workforce, a workforce guide that could be used by all businesses. So I had a meeting on February twelfth with UMass Lowell, Middlesex Community College, the Middlesex Three Coalition, Mass Hire, and we're hoping to also include the vocational schools as well. And between all of these agencies, we're hoping to create a single resource guide that will be just full of information from each of their agencies in like a one, one stop location. And not just necessarily job fairs and college recruitment. There's a lot more that could be done through some self help research. So once this guide is put together, we'll be sending that back out. For the first time that I'm aware of, we do have three listings on the Ready Mass One Hundred. And that's a really big deal. Mass Econ is the state's agency that manages real estate. And they create a guide of the top one hundred listings that are available for development, purchase. And so we may, we have three properties on this list and it's not easy to get on the list. Sorry, choking. So to get on the Ready Mass One Hundred, you have to, you have to have your site actively marketed. It has to be only held by a single property owner. You have to have full public utilities. There has to be significant acreage. You have to have appropriate zoning for the type of building and and location and and site there. You have to have adequate parking. The site has to be within five miles to a major highway. The building can has to be a minimal of fifty thousand square feet. And the building has to be in good condition. So our three sites on this. sites on this, on this listing is 300 Bill Ricker Road, 330 Bill Ricker Road, and 199 Riveneck Road. From the creation of this program of Ready Mass 100, they have filled up seven million square feet of empty space across the state. So if anything, this gives us another layer and another added support from Mass Econ of which we are a member. And Mass Econ has invited me to speak on a panel, a panel coming up soon about regional spotlight. So they would like to highlight the Chelmsford Crossroads. And again, this is a, it's a statewide agency. So we're getting some great partnership coming forward. I also just want to note that the plastic bag ban has been put out. I've been working with the sustainability manager, sustainability manager to help her connect with businesses throughout town. So we've been kind of partnering a little bit to get the message out that even, you know, as COVID comes off, we, we still have to enforce this plastic bag ban that the town has moved towards. I've been working on that. Just want to, I know you're on my email distribution list, but as you may know, I am continually pushing out information to the business community on free webinars, reopening guidance, STEM webinars, the Verizon Small Business Grants, language translation assistance, COVID vaccine guidance, and everything else that comes across my desk. I am pushing out into the business community if anyone, and I'm always encouraging my messages to be shared into other business networks or people to reach out to me to get on my distribution list. And I get great feedback from the community on it. So I think, you know, of all the different things that are happening, everybody's getting contacted in one way or another for the information that they need, or they know that they can reach out to me or show up in my office or pick up the phone. I'm available to help on a one-on-one, you know, case management, however way I can. So through some of this networking, I've been connected with the North Shore Innoventures. They are a biotech incubator that has caught the, caught the interest of the Chelmsford Crossroads at 129. And they have significant square footage, but oftentimes their, their seeds, seed startups or, or their biotech startups are looking to venture out on their own. So we're getting ready to kind of collaborate and just be involved in what each other's initiatives are. I would like to go on a tour of their location to learn more about how the Chelmsford Crossroads could fit in to their growth or any other aspect. So if there's any interest from the public officials to join me, I can share that information as well. But they were very excited to hear about the crossroads. They have offered membership for me to just be involved and be mindful of what they're doing. So that's another great new partnership. And also, New England Real Estate Journal has invited me on a speaking engagement called North of Boston. So that's another way to just keep going with our marketing message and advocate for what we're trying to do and reimage Chelmsford business community. And I have been really, I feel, doing a good effort across the board for all levels of business, small, medium, and large business. But this event is just another way to keep our efforts and, and our name and, and everything out in the forefront of, you know, people's awareness and media attention. Working on some community maps, I've been approached by some of the banks in town offering help and what they can do. And we came up with some thoughts of creating a map for locally owned restaurants, a map for locally owned shops and a shopping guide, as well as perhaps a historic, a self-guided historic walking tour map or something like that. So just kind of wanted to put that on here that I've been talking with two or three different banks and trying to come up with ways that could be helpful as the, as the reopening happens. I'm open to other suggestions from anyone. I did start a little talk show called The Q last year when we were trying to figure out how best to reach out to the community while staying remote for a little bit. And it kind of caught on. So Chelmsford Telemedia helps me to host a, a show. We were doing quite a few episodes for a while and you can see them on the Chelmsford Telemedia YouTube channel. But more, most recently, we had the Better Business Bureau come on, which was a great show. But there must be at least 20 or 20 or more shows. And I'm always interested to engage with businesses in Chelmsford that want to come on and talk about their business and, and how we can work more closely together. So just wanted to mention that. And lastly, the COVID clinics. I've been volunteering at the COVID clinics and we've been working with some of the local owned food shops to provide lunches for the volunteers. So I just wanted to put a shout out and a thank you to KJ Cafe, Cafe 12, and the Java Room for providing lunches for the COVID volunteers during the vaccination clinics. And I think that's it for now.
Sure.
Yeah, so much.
That's all great stuff, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming on so late at night and doing this for us. I know you find these really enjoyable and relaxing, easy to do. So thanks.
Good to know. I appreciate it. I appreciate your time and your feedback. And you know where to find me if anybody needs anything else.
Thanks, Lisa.
Okay.
Oh, stop your screen share.
I'm trying to. Oh my God, let's see. Hold on a second. Okay.
Thank you.
There we go. Okay.
Thanks. Have a great night. Paul, I'll turn it over to you for your bid awards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Public Works put out a bid solicitation, which I provided for you in your packets in an advance in accordance with your policies for the disposal of street sweeping and catch base and cleaning debris that's over at the Swain Road landfill site. The bids were solicited on, on February 24th. There were two bidders for the project. We're recommending the award to the low bidder on, on the project. Basically, this is sort of the first phase of a three-year phase project. And the, for the first phase, it's WL French Excavating Corporation for the bid price of $39.75 per ton.
Oh, but what drives the wide disparity in the dollars per ton? Is it? Who knows? Okay.
Yeah. You know, the problem is, is that, you know, some people just throw in a bid in the, in the event of striking gold. You know, they, they, they really have work and they'll just throw something in at a high price. In the event, right, gold, if there aren't any other bidders, they'll really, you know, create a great profit and slow everything else down. But it's, it's just unfortunate. But, you know, but again, the, the low bid is within the budget for the project and reasonable.
What determines which, which bids we post out on the Massachusetts comes by procurement site?
It, it really depends on the nature of the bid in terms of, you know, there are some activities that are, that are local only. For example, if you're doing road paving, because of the, the material and the temperature, you know, you have a limited environment in which you can take materials from, you know, because you have to have hot asphalt. So that's an example. You know, if, if you're, it really depends on the nature of the material in terms of, you know, if there's a extreme shipping cost or distance of travel. And, and also there's, there's aggregate levels. I mean, if you're going over $100,000 and you have to go on the comp buys and, and the, you know, the goods and services bulletin and so forth. But again, a lot of-
I just noticed, I just noticed that, like, this one was posted on there and most of the ones we've approved were on there, but I didn't see the fire station bid on there.
Well, that's a different type of construction. This is, these are supplies and materials, whereas the construction of a facility is, is, is a different nature of construction. It's horizontal construction and that, that goes through a different procurement process.
Okay, thank you. I will make a motion to approve the award of the disposal of street sweeping and catch base and cleaning debris to WL French Excavating Corporation as presented.
A second.
A motion and second on favor, Pat.
Aye.
George.
Aye.
Virginia.
Aye.
And I'm actually going to abstain.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, members. Moving on to my, my report, cybersecurity awareness grant award. This is really great, a great opportunity. I want to thank Ted Luter, who are IT Director, who really led the initiative on this grant proposal. As you know, cybersecurity is a big issue. And, you know, trying to, you know, protect the, the, you know, assets of the town as well as prevent aggravation for, you know, foremost. We, we're currently doing an audit right now, but, but in addition to that, Ted Security, a, a program from the Commonwealth as part of the cybersecurity awareness issue. And we're, we're now participating in the program with the nearby towns of Lowell, Tewksbury, Tingsborough, Drakehead, and Littleton. And basically, it's a year-long cyber awareness training opportunity for our employees in the town. As you can imagine with these type of programs, a lot of it is education and awareness. You know, there's a newsletter that will go out periodically from the state. In fact, we had a notice over the last weekend about a potential security threat to cities and towns. Also, there's quarterly briefings and quarterly report cards. But when it comes down to the training aspect of it, which is most important, they're committed to an initial assessment of the town's cybersecurity preparedness or, or status. And then there's a final assessment. And in between, we, we have four training assignments that employees will participate in. Any one of those training assignments is no longer than an hour. You know, so basically you get them every few months over the course of the year. And then unannounced, and during this whole process, they, they release eight phishing simulations. And basically, the, the goal is obviously to improve yourself and not to get caught into these issues that can create issues of, of data breach and, and so forth. And so, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, you know, a great opportunity for us. And again, I really want to just commend Ted Luter. I participated in an initial briefing last week. Ted also had a briefing last week and the program will start at the end of this month. So again, it's, it's really timely. You know, unfortunately, we've seen a lot of the havoc that's out there during the COVID pandemic and what's happened to the state's unemployment claims and, and, and some issues that have happened in other towns with their data and so forth. So this is, this is a great thing and I wanted to publicly acknowledge that opportunity.
Congratulations.
Thank you. The similar good news is on the COVID-19 stimulus funding. Many are aware of the American Recovery Act that is now back in the House. And this is funding not only for individuals and, and such, you know, and, and for, for vaccines and everything else. But there is funding finally for cities and towns in, as well as the Commonwealth. And the, we expect that, and what I'm reading, and I just saw some earlier this evening, it's expected to be sent to the president later this week. It will be enacted into law. And there does not appear to be any dispute between what the Senate and the House have adopted for municipal and state governments. So that, that piece is pretty much finalized. So we're, we're looking to see what's kind of come out of the air. The early indications are for the town of Chelsa that it could be potentially $3.5 million of funding and it may allow us, you know, to, to do some things we've already started out on. For example, we were very aggressive last fall and we periodically updated you and the school committee regarding improvements to the HVAC system of, of the Chelsa Public Schools, the seven buildings. That's roughly going to be a million dollar project at its completion at this point. So obviously those funds would cover the full expense of that activity. And this is beyond the cares money that the town has already received and still has balances remaining, which goes back now almost to the past year, as well as the FEMA money that, that dealt with the COVID response. And, and then the schools have also received additional money. And in the state budget, there was state coronavirus prevention funds of $180,000 that were distributed just over a week ago, the first half of the Chelsa Public Schools. And then the remaining half will be the end of this fiscal year. So there's just a lot going on out there. And we're, we're working, the town accountant, Darlene Lucia is doing a great job sort of tracking the monies and accounting for it because there are obviously, there is transparency and accountability at the end of the day. We've been working well with the superintendent, our facilities department, Public Works, you know, and just sort of, you know, getting the, you know, the necessary work done and also just making sure that our expenses for COVID are, are covered. And, you know, obviously we're, we're getting some communication from the Congresswoman, Trey Hand's office about funding opportunities and so forth. So as more information becomes available, particularly on this latest round, we'll notify you. My understanding, I heard over the weekend, that it may be allowable to be expended for infrastructure and so forth. But we're clearly going to look at, you know, the, the whole purpose of the COVID monies, which are to, you know, make our physical environments, notably the schools, but also other buildings such as libraries and others, you know, to make them safe in terms of health, healthy environments. And clearly, you know, we'll, we'll, there'll be another update to the school committee next week and, and in terms of where we're at. But that's nearing the, the final inspection cases and as well as the initial repairs. So again, it's very good news and we'll, we'll keep you updated in detail. But it's, it's something that we're tracking very closely, all cities and towns with the Mass Municipal Association and, and our others around us in order to, again, provide a, a healthy response to COVID in terms of, you know, you know, we've certainly been at the forefront in terms of PPE and, 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 and save opportunities. And again, the, these monies really will help us, you know, we're, we're in a case where, as you know, we have older school buildings, but despite the fact that our buildings are older, they, they are certainly healthy and really don't see that as a concern as, as we're gearing up to what's going to be a, hopefully a return to full-time, five-day-a-weeks education in the weeks and months ahead. So that, that concludes my report. I do have some appointments for you this evening. The first one is the Age Friendly Implementation Committee. Lisa spoke about it briefly in her coverage and, and you received an update last meeting from Fred Russo. Following that, as the board discussed, we, we did reach out to the core group and, and with Fred's guidance, we, we, I'm bringing before you a, appointments to a Age Friendly Implementation Committee. And it's this, as we discussed at the time, be a nine-member committee, three-year appointments with staggered terms. So with that, Fred Russo would be, and John Bowles and Deb Sirianni would get the initial three-year terms. And, and when I speak to people like Deb Sirianni, you know, who's our Director of Human Services and Becky Herman, our Library Director and so forth, it's that person, you know, or their position. So in the event that a person were to move on, or the person had to delegate somebody, the designate, for example, if Becky weren't, were tied up at a library conference, she could send her assistant director and, and therefore the committee can function with a quorum and still, you know, because again, this is not a statutory committee. It's a locally formed committee. So again, Fred Russo, John Bowles, Deb Sirianni for the three-year terms ending June 30th, 2024. Jennifer Malanson, our Community Services Director, Becky Herman, Library Director, and Lisa Maroney, our Business Development Director for initially the two-year terms ending June 30th, 2023. And then Kathleen Cannavan, David Hettison, our Chelsa Housing Authority Executive Director, and Dan, Dana Hearn, our Deputy Police Chief. We have the initial one-year terms ending June 30th, 2022.
Oh, I have a question. On, on this committee, will, will the meetings be public and will they be posted?
Yes. Yes, they'll all be public posted. There'll be minutes. I mean, it will function as a committee, just like Military Community Covenant or, or any other locally formed committee. And that's the, and the purpose of this is really to get the awareness out there. People can zoom in and, and have other coverage. And, you know, so this is really the, the formalized committee for the implementation process.
Okay, thanks.
I'll make a motion to approve the town manager's appointment of the nine-member Chelmsford Age Friendly Implementation Committee with the names and positions and staggered terms as presented.
Back then.
A motion and a second on favor by roll call. Pat.
Aye.
George.
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And my final appointment this evening, I'm looking for the board's confirmation for appointment of the Building Commissioner's Zoning Enforcement Officer, who also serves as the ADA Coordinator. As the board's aware, our, our, you know, Sean Shanahan was our previous position holder in this, is, is out on an extended medical leave for at least six months. And it's uncertain whether he'll be returning to, to employment, you know, due to medical issues. With, as, you know, we need to have a Building Commissioner's Zoning Enforcement Officer going forward. We obviously first contacted our local inspector, Marty Allen. Marty did not express and does not want to serve or be elevated to the Building Commissioner position. So with that, Human Resources Director, Gene Parziale, and I undertook a search advertisement formal notice with the Mass Municipal Association, so forth, for Building Commissioner, you know, zoning enforcement officer for, you know, for the permanent position moving forward, with the understanding that if at some point in time, you know, Sean Shanahan is able to return to work, he would return in a different position and, and additional, additional capacity, different capacity with accommodation. So again, we need to fill this position. I sent you the, the email of the selected candidate resume at the end of last week. I'm pleased to recommend and seek your approval of the appointment of Jose Negron.
Paul, you're freezing up on us. We lost you.
This evening. Jose, if you want to turn your camera on, you're welcome to do so. Jose is a licensed Building Commissioner in the Commonwealth. He has experience for the city of Lowell as a senior local inspector there. He also previously worked in for the city of Lawrence. He has an undergraduate degree in building construction management. You know, we're just real pleased to present his candidacy and his qualifications. We, we had many capable candidates, but, but at the end of the process, Jeannie and I both agreed that he was, is the most qualified and can, and by his temperament, fit, experienced, can well serve this community. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Jose to introduce yourself to the board and, and this evening. So thank you, Jose, for taking time out to join us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Coin, for the opportunity. And good evening, members of the board. Like Mr. Coin said, I, my name is Jose Negron. I live in the city of Lowell. Actually, I'm working currently as a, as a Senior Building Inspector. For the last year and for the last six and a half years, I've been working as a, as a local inspector. I'm a certified Building Commissioner. And I'm also certified as a local inspector. And I have a Bachelor's Degree in Construction Management and an Associate's Degree in Building Construction.
Anybody have any questions?
Do not.
Oh, just the board knows. If Jose is confirmed this evening, his start date would be the first Monday in April, which is April 5. He would, he would be compensated at step one on the pay scale for the position. And, you know, he would just have the, the normal, you know, you know, pertinence to the position, you know, cell phone, computer, use of town vehicle and so forth. So again, it's, it's a, you know, I think it's a great opportunity for the town to have Jose available to us at this time.
I'll make a motion to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Jose Negron as the Town Building Commissioner's Zoning Enforcement Officer and ADA Coordinator.
Second, a motion.
A motion, a second, all in favor, by roll call. Pat?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Welcome, Jose.
Thank you very much for the confirmation.
Congratulations.
And I look forward to making Chelmsford safer for all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So before we jump. Excuse myself tonight, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're all set, Paul?
Yeah, that's it for my report and appointments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Before we jump into, you know, the next item here, I have to just make a note and ask everybody's opinion. I had gotten emailed, I guess, a video from April Danielson at 4:30. And I didn't check my town email prior to the meeting. And Pat Snow was on. He was, he was in the member here. And, and the video wasn't play, oh, he's still, so Pat, Pat Snow's still here. I don't know, do we, would it be all right? It's a one-minute video. It was her introduction into her candidacy. And I missed it. Again, it came in late. I don't know what you guys want me to do. I don't even know if I can get it to play and for the sound to come through.
Yeah. Only be shared in here.
Let me just see if I can do this and get the volume to play correctly.
I can help out with that, too. I actually had completely spaced on the time. And I thought the meeting began at seven. So it was my intention to come early, just in case, so I could help. And then I realized, oh, shoot, it was actually six. So I've just been watching the meeting and doing a couple other things, just in case this would happen. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, let me just see if I can do this. And if everybody could just bear with me one second. I don't know, you can see the video now, the screen?
I can see it.
Yeah, okay. Let me just see if this play works.
So I think.
Can you turn your volume up? We can't hear her.
When you share your screen, and you have the thing that comes up to select screen share, I think there should be a little icon to check that says, share volume, share sound. And if you like, I actually sent that one to you. So I can see if I have that functionality.
Let me just back this up and try this again. I did click the.
Good evening. My name is April Danielson, and I am running for Chelmsford Select Board. A little bit about myself, I've lived in Chelmsford for over six years. I'm a stay-at-home mom currently. However, I have worked in human services for over 18 years. The last five of those 18 years, I worked as a service coordinator for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. As a service coordinator, I acted as a liaison and an advocate for adults with disabilities. I would like to apply and provide those same skills of advocacy by serving on our select board. I would like to advocate on behalf of you, the constituents, and work effectively and collectively within our community to provide effective change in Chelmsford. I ask that in this upcoming election, you vote for April Danielson for Select Board. I am grateful for the Board Chair and Board Members for allowing me this opportunity to introduce myself. I am looking forward to working with the town of Chelmsford and its constituents in the near future. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Kenny.
Thank you very much for sharing that. I, that was, April actually just started a new job that she needed to be at tonight. And I had said I would help out with that. So I apologize for the delay in helping to get that to you. But thank you so much.
Yep, no problem. All right. With that, we'll move on to the next topic, which was the Select Board Policies. All right. So we had looked at this the last meeting and gone in and made some, some editing changes that were highlighted in the, in the handout that came with our packets in red. Do you want me to screen share it? Or does anybody have any comments in my folder?
I had a couple of questions. I don't care if you screen share it or not.
Okay.
Excuse me. Pat, I just noticed that there were some sections that you deleted, but you didn't delete the titles. So the table of contents didn't update.
Correct. Yeah, I wanted to wait and see if everything was going to be approved before I went in and had everything renumbered. Yeah, I do want to, I'm aware of that.
I had a, I had a question on page 27. It looked like you added a new paragraph in section 3.3. And then in 3.4, deleted the board shall, as a matter of policy, postpone any vote until the next meeting relative to alcoholic beverage licenses.
Right. Because it's in a.
So that's because you put it in the paragraph ahead of it?
Correct. Yeah, just not so, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't have to be repetitive, right? Because the first paragraph, the one that I added applies to all licenses. And that one was only referencing amended licenses. So basically, we didn't have that first, you know, we didn't have that, the first paragraph, the first section before.
So your header, approval of new or transferred alcoholic beverage licenses would also cover 3.4?
Correct. And 3.5, yeah.
Okay. I didn't ask this last time, but section 4.2, the, all the line-stripping roads, is that list up to date? Or is there anything that we need to double check with it? I don't know if we need a DPW to take a look at it, or?
I, I almost think that, you know, the, the, the types of roads, I think they would mainly put in there because the first time when we approved this policy, there was some confusion about what, into what. I don't know if we even need the, because they are going to change, you know, as new developments happen. And, I mean, I don't know how anyone feels.
Well, I mean, is the record kept somewhere else other than this policy? Is it kept in the DPW or something?
Paul can probably answer that question. I would think somewhere.
Well, the reason we kept it in this policy was there was, there was a controversy of, you know, several years back when a road was erroneously striped. And we went through the list by detail and, you know, clarified sections. So I think it's important bearing the concerns that I know are still a little sore out there with some folks to keep it here.
Okay. Okay, well, Paul then.
I wouldn't want to lose the scenic road listing.
Yeah, well, yeah, those, that's, you know, that's designated by, by Planning Board, I think. Yeah.
That wasn't scenic road as well, I believe, the one that we striped, right?
Right, exactly. It was, yeah.
Okay. Um, and then the only other question I had was, did we give the personnel policies and procedures that we took out as Town Council or the Personnel Board or somebody looking at that to make sure we didn't leave something on the cutting room floor?
I haven't done that yet. I will do that.
Be well. Okay.
So I don't know if anybody else had any questions about the edits on that, if we could, you know, if not, then we could accept that and move on to the new one.
George and Ken, are you?
I'm good.
Okay. So you want a motion to accept that, Pat?
Correct.
Um, I'll make a motion to accept the Select Board Policy Edited Document as presented.
Second.
A motion, second, all in favor, by roll call. Pat?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
So then on the, on the new policies, the first one that I, that's on the list is the Code of Responsibility. And we've, we've actually talked about this before several months ago, when we brought forward the, the Code of Conduct, two codes of conduct really, for the, one for the board and one for the Town Manager. And at that time, I guess I kind of felt some reluctance by some, the board members to, to include such detail in our policy document. So what I, I did here, what I'm proposing here, is replacing that Code of Responsibility with a Code of Conduct, which includes, you know, some of that information. But then, the, what I consider the critical parts of the Code of Conduct that we talked about several months ago. So I don't know if anybody has any thoughts. I know.
I still feel like I'm struggling with this one. Because we talk about the, the functions and duties of the Select Board and the Town Manager. And I, I kind of feel like a statement like that should just reference is set forth in the Town Charter. And we shouldn't try to keep track of that in two documents. And then like, so, so that was kind of the first paragraph. And the second one, in terms of understanding the duties, authority, and responsibilities. And I wasn't sure. We're calling out the state and local, on state and local levels. But again, those first two paragraphs, is it just, is it just a simple statement that says the basic functions of the Select Board and the Town Manager are set forth in the Town Charter? Because I, I just get, I get confused when we, when we start trying to identify both of them, identify them in both place. I would think a Code of Conduct is more about behavior.
Okay, then, how, does it, does the third paragraph then start talking about what you mean?
I was okay with the third paragraph. I struggled again with the second to last paragraph. And I was okay with the one that says, we shall be respectful of each other. And that, and I'm okay with upholding the confidentiality of executive session. And I was getting tripped up on the one about this administrative change of command.
Thank you.
And all such activities shall be handed through, handled through proper channels. I didn't know what that was. And I feel like that's an entirely one-sided paragraph. I, it seems like it's dangerous. There's no organization that I know of that uses such a, like a pinch point approach. And as board members, we're interacting with other people who are employed in Town Hall through our liaison assignments to other committees and other things. So, and I understand, we don't want to create confusion by board members going and giving direction to Paul's staff. I, that, to me, that's not appropriate. But I, you know, even, even the statement about concerns regarding staff performance shall be conveyed through private conversation. Well, I agree with that. But if we're going to start bringing up convert, issues of staff behavior, I think we should have a statement in there about what's the Town Manager's responsibility back to the Select Board. Because there have been occasions when we've gotten letters addressed to the Select Board about town employees. And yet, like, we don't get feedback on what actually happened, because that's all in the hands of the Town Manager. So I'm, I'm just struggling with that, with that paragraph. I think it's, to me, it's just very one-sided. And if we're going to talk about interaction with town employees, we either, I think it needs to be reworked a little bit, or we should just strike it. Because the Charter lays out the chains of command and the responsibilities. I don't know why we have to say it here as well.
Okay.
I'll let other board members comment. Those were the two things that just jumped out at me.
So if I can just rephrase, then you would be okay with, with keeping paragraphs 3, 4, and 6? And eliminating.
I am, yeah, I, I didn't see anything.
And you think the others are all sufficiently handled in, in the Charter or other documents?
I, I do, but I'd like some input from Paul and the, and the rest of the board, because this affects Paul as well.
I, I, I'm going to seem a little not, which document are you?
I'm reading the Policy Proposals document, Pat's section 1-5.
So when I open that, it says Town of Sudbury. Is that correct?
It says that, it says that at the top, but it's not the Town of Sudbury. The, the file name, for some reason.
Okay.
The property.
I just want to make sure I was looking at the right one. Because we had the Town of Chatham, and we had the Town of Sudbury, and I couldn't figure out why we were.
Oh.
Okay.
There's something on the file property. There's something on the file properties that, that say Sudbury when you open it up in a tab.
Okay.
Off the town website. So, so what I'm looking at, Ken, is section one dash five code of responsibility. That's what's Pat's labeled as the current policy.
Okay.
And she's suggesting replacing it with one dash five code of conduct. And what I was talking about was paragraphs one and two, I think, are best handled by saying that the functions and responsibilities of the select board and town manager are set forth in the town charter. Instead of trying to reiterate them here and the chart, because the charter is the governing document.
And I agree with that, because there's been some confusion between different documents in town. And going back and forth.
Yeah, but.
Go ahead.
Responsibilities aren't code of conduct, it's, the responsibilities are in, are in the charter. And then Pat's got her third paragraph, must recognize that action at official legal meetings is binding. Can't make statements out of that. I think that gets more into conduct and behavior. So that one was okay with me. The one that says shall be respectful of each other was okay with me. And the last one that says shall uphold the confidentiality of executive session. Where I was getting tripped up is the second to last paragraph about this chain of command and us not interacting with other town department heads. I don't know what proper channels are and just this whole idea of if there is a staff issue, I, I agree that it should be conveyed in private, but I don't know. I don't know. I, I, I think there's a responsibility back to the select board in that too. So if we're going to put something in there, I think it should be a two-way paragraph. Did we lose George?
Apparently.
Yeah, it's awful to me. So I mean, I agree with the comment that procedures and policies should be in the charter, in conduct topics should be here. And I think that I mean, part, part of that second to last paragraph, as far as, you know, keeping conversations, you know, private, especially when it comes to staff, I think that could go here. And the rest maybe queue over the charter. I, I'm not, I mean, I hear what Virginia's saying, the way things have been handled in the past and, and we kind of don't know how they're handled. You know, the, the issues brought to some of the attention via a letter mail to the town hall or, or so forth. And then we have to have full faith that it was handled or, or taken care of, which I'm not, it's not a, an editorial comment. It's just, I, I think the way it was done.
Well, and, and the, the first part of the paragraph, I was just really getting hung up on too, Ken. It, it just feels like, I don't know what our relationship is with the department heads, if anything, or if we're just not supposed to ever talk to them.
Well, I think my understanding is, you know, the way we talk, the way, the proper way to talk to a department is you go to Paul and say, I would like to have a discussion with one of your department heads. Let him know what's going on, just out of mutual respect. And then, you know, if, if it's almost acceptable to Paul, then you can go do that. But you don't want to be usurping Paul's control over the department head in town.
So instead of saying all such activities shall be handled through proper channels, which is somewhat vague, could it just say we shall respect administrative chain of command by refraining from instructing or requesting assistance from town department heads without full coordination with the town manager? Or something like that. I don't, Paul, can you weigh in here?
Yeah, I think what you just said would, would be, would be fitting what the charter says. I mean, what the charter says is that the, the board of select when it's supposed to act through policies. And that the administrative responsibility for the town falls with the town manager. And, and, and I think that's, I think that's probably what was, what was in the, the existing code of responsibility. And I think what, what is tempted to be done here in that basically the board isn't supposed to be involved with the administration of the town. And I think that's the issue of, 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 of the chain of command and, and so forth.
Is it an issue or has it been an issue?
Oh, sure.
In your time here?
Yeah, yes, it's, it's, it's been a constant issue. And, and I don't think by bad will, I think members of the board in the past and perhaps president have tried, you know, in, you know, and with good intentions to try to get things done for constituents. But and oftentimes, like you said, it, it, it often violates the chain of command and sort of goes to, you know, sources. And, and in some cases, even below the level of department head, quite frankly. And I think that that's just, you know, that's not what is envisioned in, in the charter and in, you know, and I think if you, if you, you know, in terms of, if you turn the situation around, I mean, how do you manage if you have, you know, people going around you or are not communicating with you? And, and, and then to the earlier comment, I, I, I've always believed that if there was ever a comment that was raised by employee that I fully informed the board with follow-up in terms of what action was taken, if the matter was resolved. I don't think I've left you in the dark in terms of, well, that's just the administrative point of the town and, you know, it's none of your business. I don't, I don't think that's, that's either been the attitude.
And again, Paul, I didn't, yeah, that's why I said, yeah, that's why I said no editorial comment. I'm not, I'm not saying that you left us in the dark intentionally or did anything. I'm just saying that, you know, in the past, I think there's been some letters that have gone to town hall and, and I'm not saying it was intentionally, unintentionally. I mean, we got a lot of letters.
Right.
We spent time pulling up every letter, we'd be here all night.
Right. I think that's the issue is I think the public often doesn't understand how the town is supposed to function. And they reach out to select board members and so forth and not recognizing, you know, the, the, how the town operates. Are also the fact that you've got independent elected boards and employees, you know, who, who function independent of the town manager, such as, you know, the library director or the, the health director and so forth. And they get frustrated as to, well, why aren't things just sort of taken care of? And it's like, well, because that's under a different elected board and we really don't have that, you know, authority. So again, but coming back to the point of this, I mean, I think Virginia, the language you suggested with your final comments would, you know, is probably most fitting in terms of what's described in the charter and I think the intent of the charter.
And I think too, part, Virginia, I, what Paul gets to or maybe a little bit alluded, sometimes you get caught up in this where someone reaches out to you, like Paul said, and says, can you help me out with something? And then you're in town hall and you pass them, you say, hey, can you, you know, talk to that, so forth, that they want to sign on this road because of, you know, turtle's crossing or whatever. And then next thing you know, you, you know, you unintentionally gone around Paul. I think we need to be reminded every year that that's the chain of command, that's what we're supposed to do. Cause I know I've tripped on it, you know, just running into someone, even, even just out at the grocery store, I run into Gary Persicetti and said, hey, by the way, and, you know, afterwards, I'm like, oh geez, I shouldn't have done it that way. I should have, you know, brought it, gone to Paul and asked for permission. So I think you, you just sometimes get caught on that stuff and it makes a little bit of a mess and you don't realize it until afterwards. But I did like the way you worded, worded it there. You know, when you said, Paul, you're trying to command.
Yeah, so on, on that paragraph then, to add that phrase that, that Virginia said, with, without the full cooperation of the town manager and then, and then strike the next sentence.
Yes, I said coordination with.
Yes, what I said.
I thought you said cooperation.
Okay, I, I wrote coordination. And what about the, and then, and then the last, last sentence then is, is okay or?
About the confidentiality of executive session?
Uh, no, the last sentence of that paragraph, concerns about staff performance. I mean, maybe that's just a given that, you know, it's.
Well, so is executive session is a given, but.
Right.
Again, if this is going to serve as any reminder, then it's not a bad place to have it.
I, I guess what I was wondering is concerns regarding staff performance and or behavior shall be conveyed to the town manager through private conversation. Okay. Is there another piece to that, that, you know, as, you know, as appropriate or at, at the town manager's discretion, you know, feedback would be given back to the select board member or select board who raises the concern. And maybe that's outside of the charter, I don't know. But I know in the past, Paul, I asked about what had happened with the situation, because there was a letter that was written directly to the select board. And the walls went up when I asked what happened. And I mean, I don't need to know the full disposition, but at least that something happened and you know, HR and legal and whoever met with the employee, okay, fine. But I just, I, I don't know that. Is it inappropriate for us to ask a question to follow up on something?
I mean, that's a, that's a very general question.
I know, and, and, and there's certain, I mean, there's certain things that I shouldn't know about and, and I, I respect that. But if somebody's come to me or if I've identified an issue with a town employee, I want to feel like I can go back to you and say, okay, like, how is it being handled as long as it's within your, you, you're not breaching some kind of privacy policy or law or whatever, but it's within your ability to at least give some feedback. Because like I said, that, that has not been smooth in the past.
Again, it's, 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 it's sort of that, it, it, speaking abstract is difficult. But again, if you, if the board is not to be involved with the administration of the town, then you're not involved with the administration of the town. You're supposed to act through policies. And yes, I, I think that any manager, including myself, would assure the board that something was, was taken care of. But there were issues of privacy and confidentiality that I think have to be respected. Because unfortunately, you know, there's just, you know, it, it just, it, it particularly in disciplinary matters, that can get a, a bit sticky. I think that's the best way to describe it in terms of rumor versus reality. And, and I think that's, that's oftentimes why you get the hesitancy. It's like, you know, we address this, you know, really that's all we can say, you know, in terms of, you know, because sometimes there, you know, there's, there may be more to a situation and then can be, then can be disclosed. And sometimes there are sort of resolutions that in the essence of getting resolutions, don't require an admission of wrongdoing. That, you know, so you can imagine there's some things that, that can get a little legal, like legalese and a little sticky that, you know, in, in, in the essence of protecting the town from liability, things can, can often be, you know, addressed but not discussed, I guess the best way to describe it. But as opposed to, you know, if something is ongoing, then I think, you know, then that's, then that's obviously going to become self-evident. Again, it's hard, it's hard to talk about the abstract, you know.
So how about if, if I add a, a sentence after, that, a last sentence there that would say something like, at the discretion of the town manager, the disposition of those concerns will be provided to the board.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's a challenge though, Pat, if you provide it to the board and the board's records become public record. Uh, and there becomes like minutes or something that's decided to the board not to violate the meeting law. Then that again could cause a problem in terms of privacy and, and personnel matters. And I think that is often why the, the, the situation gets, gets a little sticky and, and because of, because of the public records law, that, that may, may present a problem. Because you, you can, you can imagine situations where, you know, that things get addressed, but they, but they not, may not want to be publicly disclosed. And, and again, I'm just talking to Charles, I'm talking about community in general. Because again, when you deal, when you present to the board, then that's a public communication and a public record. Or, or even if it's an executive session, at some point, it may become a, a public matter. And so again, I'm, I'm not trying to put roadblocks up, I'm just trying to present the realities of, of trying to resolve matters that could be grievances or, or issues involving union employees and so forth that are, that are, that are sticky.
Okay.
So, so what's the resolution? Not that last sentence then, or take up, take up the sentence about concerns regarding staff?
I, I'm, I guess I'm looking for input from the rest of the board. I'm, I mean, I'm okay with the sentence. I just felt like it leaves us hanging.
I, I, I think the sentence, I think the sentence was probably more focused on private conversation. Because I, I, I think as opposed to having a member bring something up at a public meeting, I think that's probably where that genesis of that may have come from. That you didn't want employee staff performance or issues being brought to a meeting like tonight's meeting where, hey, I've got a problem with so-and-so of the XYZ department and how there's something, you know. And, and you can imagine, I, I think that's probably where that came from, was really the words, private conversation.
Does even having that statement there put us at vulnerability for open meeting law? I mean, it, it's one thing if I go to you privately and say, hey, Paul, you know, I, but if three people go to you privately, I don't even know if that's allowed.
It's to do it separately.
Huh?
If it's done separately, if each, if each three of us go to him separately, that's.
That's true.
But I think, again, I think that's where it came from, was the idea that concerns were brought to the manager, conveyed to the manager through private conversation. I think it was, again, I don't recall, I don't think I was even present when this was adopted, but I think that was the, the essence of what's trying to take place there in terms of.
It, it wasn't adopted. This is Pat's new one.
Okay, okay, but if it was, if it was adopted in a community where it was lifted from, I think that's probably where it was coming from.
Yeah. Okay.
You know, and, and same thing, I mean, if you think about it, you wouldn't go to a school committee meeting and see somebody getting on the performance of a teacher or an educator at a school committee meeting. I think, you know, that would just be out of line. And I think that's probably what's trying to, the similar parallel, what, what's trying to take place here.
I'm okay with leaving the sentence there.
Yeah, I'm okay.
All right, good. So what about the first two paragraphs? Do, are they, are they necessary? I mean, it has been suggested that.
Right.
That.
I don't think they are. I mean, that's, that's from the charter, right, pretty much, I mean, that's.
I just, yeah, it's, it should be, it's available with the charter, yeah.
Yeah, I would just say that the responsibilities are set forth in the town charter.
Okay.
I agree.
All right. All right. That takes care of that one. The next one was on, on contract review. Right now, all that's in there is the, the select board shall be notified of and allowed to review all contract proposals, RFPs and bids at a town manager's office at least five working days prior to the bid award by the town manager. And I, I know that since, you know, it seems lately there's been some more interest in knowing more about how the, the steps that the contracts and whatever go through. That's why I proposed this, the new policy, which states that when a bid solicitation is issued by the town, the town manager shall provide the following information to all board members via email. The purpose of the bid solicitation, date it was issued, the date of the bidder's conference, if any, date, time and place of the bid opening, and expected date of the bid award. And any board member obviously can request an electronic copy if they, if they want one. So I didn't know if this would help. I mean, this way it, it initially puts the, the burden on the town manager to get us that information. But then it gives us the burden to put that in our calendars if we want to go to the bidder's conference or go to the bid opening.
I like the way, I like the way you rewrote.
Okay.
I think it looks good, Pat.
Okay, thanks.
But Paul, are you okay?
Yeah, it's going to be my next question.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's just basically what I did for, you know, what you saw earlier this evening. I think I'd just send you the RFP. You know, the, the, or a link to the RFP, you know, which would provide all those, A through E would be in the RFP. So I think that's.
The difference is, Paul, for the one that we approved this evening, you sent us the RFP and the bid award recommendation. But in this scenario, what would have happened is when the town issued the RFP, you would have said to let you know, we've just issued an RFP for ABC, you know, and the, the bid opening date is, and there's a bidders conference. And then you'd either give us the RFP or we'd request the documents if they're. So that would be the difference, is when the, the trigger is the RFP, not the award.
Yeah, I, I think the simplest thing is when an RFP goes out, we'll, we'll provide a, a copy to the board or a link to the board. And then that would be, be accomplished, yeah. And then that would be, be accomplished. Yeah, definitely. That's fine.
All right. So everybody's okay with the way that's written then, even though we will get the information a different way than what. All right, um, the next one is a, a new policy. It's has to do with pub breweries licensing for pub breweries. And I know for, for several years now, we've been trying to attract this type of facility to town. So. I, I thought maybe it would be a, an idea to order, in order to incentivize that, to allow an annual license fee discount. Maybe forever. I mean, I'm proposing in the policy for the first five years that the, that the establishments in Chelmsford. Obviously they'd have to follow all the other regulations and um. From the other departments and then I'm also proposing that we reserve. Two, well, I'm saying two, we could make it more or less. Restaurant alcohol licenses for this type of establishment. It wouldn't keep us from having more of those. And right now, it's, this isn't an issue because we, we're pretty flush with restaurant alcohol licenses, but. You know, like a couple of years ago, we were down to our last one or two. If we were in that situation, again, basically what this would do would, would be to say that, um, if we were down to just one or two left, that. If there were no pub breweries in town, that we would, um, we would save those for, for those types of establishments. Again, I, you know, I think it does provide some incentive. And does help, you know, struggling local business like that, at, at least for, at least in the short term. So I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that.
I mean, I, how much is a licensing fee?
Paul, what is it? Fifteen hundred, two thousand?
Yeah, for, for a full license, yeah.
I'd almost say give it to them for the first five years. I mean. Half, like saying. I don't know. If we're really interested in getting a brewery in town or some type of a brew pub. I would say you give them the license for maybe the first three years.
I feel like I've been asleep at the switch. So why, why are we trying to incentivize this to come to town? I mean, not that I'm opposed to it, but I don't understand why we treat it differently.
Because we have, there's been when the, when the. Push for microbrews uh and small brew pubs sprung up in all across the country. We were approached by a nonprofit association, Brew Brothers, and they came and they said, listen, and when we put a pin in the different spots in the state. Chelmsford's really an ideal spot to, you know, encourage a brewery, which got everybody thinking. Geez, wouldn't it be great if Chelmsford had a go-to brewery? Because breweries turn into more of a designation or a destination spot instead of just going to a restaurant. There's a huge, you know, following of breweries that they'll actually drive to Chelmsford to go to the new brewery. And so there was kind of a push to somehow entice um a brew pub, a brewery, a brew restaurant. You know, come to Chelmsford and there's been a lot of um. Entities that were interested that have come through, you know, town hall and asked questions, but just nobody settled here yet. So the thought was that, geez, if we could get a brewery, it, again, just would attract, it would put us on the map for breweries and, and give another reason for people to drive to Chelmsford. And then to see the town and so forth. So there was a sort of underlying push to, to, to get one in Chelmsford.
But you don't want a barroom type of thing, no, Kenny, right?
No, no. If you've ever been, if you've ever taken a trip to a brewery, I mean, I, I have family cousins and stuff. There's six of us that get together and we'll make a trip up to the lakes. Read and say hit five new breweries or five breweries and then a different week, you might go up to Maine and, you know. You go out to the Treehouse Brewery in Western Mass and it's a two hour wait to get in the door. I know people will drive there with their wife and kids in the car and getting lined in with their lawn chairs and sit there for two hours just to go inside.
So many different types, flavors and types, stuff like that.
Qualifies. Special releases and so forth. So it was just an interest in, in bringing it to Chelmsford. That's. And Lisa Maroney said the same thing. She said, you know, we have a lot of interest, but it's just not, not come to fruition in Chelmsford. So. I think the, the draw was what can we do to try to get one to settle here?
Yeah, and then the other question I would have is why isn't it coming to fruition in Chelmsford? Because I don't think the. And, and I'm not saying I oppose this policy, but I don't think a $2,000 licensing fee is. Going to be the reason why somebody doesn't come to Chelmsford. There's, there's got to be some other reason.
If anybody has any other thoughts to put in the policy to incentivize them, we could do that. But I don't know what that would be.
Right now you need food, right? Not as a service.
Right, and that's a board of health thing. So, you know, we can't, we can't.
Having been intimately involved, unless, George, you hit the nail on the head. What's happened is, is, you know, they have to be able to serve food. And, you know, albeit some towns allow food trucks to qualify into that. Um, our board of health has told them you need to have a operating kitchen, I think is my understanding. And, you know, that's a hundred thousand dollar, and there's, there's no vacant. Restaurants in town that already have that fit out, you know, sitting there waiting for them. So when we offered the two restaurant drive-through licenses, uh, one twenty, that, the goal of that was to get someone to come in and fit out two restaurants. Um, because once, and the money went towards the equipment because once it's fit out and the, the restaurant doesn't make it, at least you have a spot that's been fit out for a restaurant for, to try to attract somebody else. So that is a long answer to your question. Uh, you know, we're trying to do anything to encourage, you know, if they've got to put in a restaurant. A kitchen, even if it's just to meet the definition of a kitchen, uh, any which way you can sort of. Help and you may not get there in one fell swoop. You may be doing it by nickels and dimes, but. You know, again, it's just another way to try to relieve some of the burden.
So if we, if we reserve, if we reserve two licenses for this type of establishment and then let's say. You know, we go gangbusters bringing restaurants and businesses into town and maybe there's already a brew pub, but. We've only got one license left. Is there, is there a way to waive this?
There's a way to waive every.
And award the other license if we want.
Sure, I mean, there's always a way to, yeah, a way to do that, yeah.
Okay.
So, so.
I think it just demonstrates a, a, another level of support and interest.
I get it.
Yeah, maybe Lisa could even take and say, we have a new policy in town, you know, throw it out there as a marketing sort of note.
Everybody's okay with then just for, for waiving the, 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 what's the fee for the first, what, first three years, first five years?
I think if you waive the fee for three years, it's, you know, you're not giving, it's not much of a difference in half a fee for five years.
Right.
Paul, what are you thinking?
Yeah, I, I think the three years makes sense waiver, yeah.
All right, the next one is one that Virginia asked me um suggested and it's the, uh, policy for issuing proclamations and resolutions. As you know, we've had several situations recently where we've had groups. Come before us and want us to sign a proclamation or a resolution and then we've had, had some issues with it. So. Basically what this um policy would do would be to require. Anybody asking us to, to do that, to be sure that they bring that policy or resolution to the board. At least one meeting before they, they want it acted on formally and it would give us. An opportunity to review it and possibly send it back for revisions if needed. It also should be noted that this would only have to be done one time. If, if it's a proclamation that's, that's going to be, you know, issued every year or whatever. Once it's um approved one time, then they don't need to do that every year. And also, uh, I added the, you know, it's wasn't anything that, that Virginia had said, but I thought. For those that are just. I don't know, feel-good proclamations, I guess you could say, like when individual board members want one for. A resident reaching a hundred years old or significant retirement or anniversary. Those usually are not read before the, during a meeting anyway. They're just meant to be something presented to somebody at, at an event. You know, like Camp Paul's 50th anniversary or something like that. So. That's the gist of that suggested policy. Any comments, thoughts, edits?
I, I think it's ready to.
I thought it looked good, Pat. Um, the only thought that occurred to me was the paragraph that says the board may refer the proclamation back to the requister for changes. Um, at the, after that sentence. Do we want to state something like it is the requister's responsibility to allow sufficient review time prior to finalization and signature of the proclamation? Just so that it's not. We're not always in the pants-on-fire seat, right? It's their responsibility to plan for it.
Well, they're kind of planning for it by submitting it at least one meeting in advance, right?
Okay, fair enough, George.
Right, and then it doesn't say that, that we'll take it up at the next meeting. It just says they have to make the changes before we approve it.
Yep.
Pat, when it says groups and individuals, does that mean non-town committees or town committees as well? Because. You had a recent one that was brought to you by a town committee. For a proclamation and, and I wasn't sure if that, if that was inclusive and covered under groups and individuals. Or, you know, or is he talking something like the garden club was, you know, I'm trying to figure out where, 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 if this is applying to outside groups and individuals or this was applying also to town. Committees, I guess.
Yeah, I guess I consider the, the town committee to be a group, but if it needs to be spelled out more definitively, I, I can do that.
Okay. So something like, but, but something like Arbor Day, which is annual, then that, that's sort of an annual one, so it doesn't fall under this, right? That's a repetitive one.
Maybe the first time it would have, but now that we've been doing it for forty-five years or however long we've been doing it.
Chelmsford Women of Today, or I'm trying to think of the ones that have come before the board, uh, that those, those are repetitive, okay.
Right, I mean, I, I don't think anybody's ever had an issue with, with those.
Okay.
So I guess, I guess they're grandfathered in as it were.
Okay.
Be, before we move to the vision and values, um, a resident contacted me today about. Should we have, well, where I took the, the, the communication was, should we consider having a policy? For newly elected select board members onboarding. That says that they're like required to read the select board policies. They're required to read the entire charter. They're required to read the open meeting law text. Cause I know Christina gives a packet when we come on board, but like I went back and looked at mine and it only had an excerpt from the charter about what the board of selectmen responsibilities are. And so that the. The question was, can we require newly elected board members to actually, you know, read the charter, read the policy book?
I don't know how you require them to read it. Are you going to sit there and watch them as they read it?
I, I, I don't know, but just to say that there's a policy that says as part of their onboarding, they'll at least be, be given the documents or. I, I read, um, um, as a candidate on my own. And then actually when I got the packet and there was only an excerpt from the charter, I went and printed the whole charter and read it.
I mean, I think you might be better off saying that. I, I think you should probably come up with a list of documents that should be given to the, like you, I mean, I, I, when as a candidate, I had to go. Printed off. It was never, like the charter was, I, I went and found it when I was a candidate. It was never given to me at a later date.
Or, or, I mean.
Policies and procedures or.
And we can, we can just think about it if you want, but I guess the question is, do we want to have some type of onboarding process or onboarding checklist? For new, new select board members?
Well, I, I think we do have a checklist. I mean, we could put something in, in the policies, although, you know, I can't do it tonight since it, you know.
Right.
But yeah, something that says it, it's expected that newly elected board members will. You know, read and comprehend or, or something like that. These, these, uh, you know, and Mr. Documents that they should have.
And then there's like the MMA handbook, which I thought was useful. And then Paul reached out to me. In my first couple of months and said, hey, the MMA has this training available. Right? So maybe that's part of the checklist, like, you know, just as part of the onboarding, here's some guidance for new select board members. Not anything we're going to go police and enforce, but it might help just to write it down.
Yeah, okay, I can, yeah, I can add that to the list and bring it up next time.
You want me to take, do the vision and values, Pat?
Yes, that would be good. I was going to ask if you would do that.
Okay, so there's a couple of um. Files for the vision and values. One is the draft policy. And I took some language that Pat had drafted and um. Just worked it a little bit more and I had, after I took the action from our last meeting. To talk to Paul Haverdy about it. Um, I had a conversation with him and this is, this is where all that landed. So, um, the first sentence is just to put it in context that we've adopted a vision and value statement. Newly elected select board members will sign the acknowledgement. Uh, newly appointed committee and commission members will be asked to sign the acknowledgement. And town of Chelmsford employees will be asked to sign. I did talk to Paul and he said he would be okay with having all the existing town employees sign since they don't have. The turnover that the, but you know, the three-year terms and things that committees do, where, where we would eventually catch them all. Um, in addition, new employees would sign as part of the onboarding process. And then members of other elected bodies would be encouraged to sign it, but we can't mandate that. The other one that's in question right now is, is the finance committee, which is appointed by the town moderator and Paul Haverdy is just trying to close the loop with John Curlin on whether he would be okay with saying that, that. His appointed committee should also sign or whether we wind up putting them in the encouraged category. And then the last statement that says we'll review the vision and value statement on a periodic basis, at least every, at least once every ten years. That was part of the committee's recommendations that we adopted. Last July when we voted to adopt the recommendations. So I just wrote that down. Any comments on the content?
It, it seems that whenever we put anything in, in the policies that, that specifies a periodic review. You know, that hardly ever happens. Um, since it is in the recommendations and we reference the vision and value statement. I don't know, is it necessary to have, have that specific timing in the, in the policy?
Well, the, the, the. That recommendation is not part of the vision and value statement. It was part of the. It was the recommendation slide that says adopt the vision and value statement. Have a way that you start to institutionalize it with the boards and committees and review it at least once every ten years. So it would, it wouldn't be covered just by virtue of the vision and value statement itself.
I mean, I'm okay with leaving it in. I just, yeah, okay, somebody will look at that three years from now and say, is it time? You know what I mean?
Well, then we, we, yeah.
So, anyway.
So the questions at the bottom. So Paul, is it possible to just implement this electronically? Cause that would be the easiest thing.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can distribute it electronically with the confirmation and probably keep it in somebody's HR file as opposed to, uh, for employees. I, you know, I, I think that's probably the most effective way of doing it in, in terms of, that's, it's really where the intake is, is, you know, recorded.
Right, so you can, it, it can be implemented on, you can basically just type your name in to sign it, right? And then it goes, it gets logged.
Yeah, we could just, yeah, we could place record of it in the, in the personnel file.
So, so would, would Ted or somebody set that forum up for us?
Yeah, we can find out the means to get it done.
And then for like the boards and committees, does that just get kept in? Is that also kept in your HR files somewhere or in the town clerk's records?
Well, it, it's not in the clerk's records. It would be, we would do it in the employee files. I think you would do, we would send it out with the notification of appointment. You know, from our office on appointment. So that way it's, 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 it's sort of coordinated. it's, 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 it's sort of coordinated in that manner.
Okay. And then just the other thing is, um, as employees, we would all sign it. We wouldn't just wait. We would sign it when it's implemented. So. Um, the second attachment is the actual, is the revised version of the acknowledgement of the receipt of the vision and value statement. And this is basically what Paul Haverty had before. The only changes are I put the entire vision and value statement in the document. So it's all in one place. Um, and then I, where he had him, um, board role, I put, I changed it to employee or board committee commission role. Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
And then Ken, you asked about the Chatham thing. I just, I had asked Christina and Pat if they would just put it in at the end because it was a document that Paul Haverty had provided previously through email as an example code of conduct. And it just never made it to the board and I didn't know if it would be food for thought or anything else we were talking about. So. That's all I have.
I just have a question on, on the, the acknowledgement.
Yeah.
At, at the end, it says, uh, I will be required to uphold these visions and values. Who, who determines if they're, if they are upholding?
I think that would be a question for Paul Haverty, because those are his words.
And, and what would be the ramifications if, if it's determined that they, that they don't? Like, I guess, you know, I guess the enforcement is, is kind of the issue. I mean, it's, I have no problem with, with signing it. Because it, it does tell us what the town as a whole is, is trying to achieve. I just, you know, think like some questions about that.
So the question is, should it just be an acknowledgement or if that statement is in there? Who's the, how do we determine that it's complied with and who's the enforcer?
Right.
I can go, you want me to go ahead and ask that question?
Sure.
All right.
Hey, I think that's it for policies tonight.
I think so too. Uh, so agenda item eleven, uh, we received, we, I'm not sure who was on the email. I know I was on there and I think Paul, maybe you were on there. I know that was, maybe it was George.
I put it in the packets. Everybody I think has seen it.
Yeah, so, yeah, we got an email from the Armenian National Committee of the Merrick Valley asking us to fly their flag or the Armenian flag on April twenty-third, twenty-fourth in, um, just, we responded and let them, I think they even let them know that their, our flag policy was not to fly any other flags, but the town flags. Uh, and they did ask us to, you know, reconsider and, um, and if we wouldn't, if they had a proclamation, but we can talk about that at the next meeting, because that came later on, community mail chain. So I just, before I definitively said, no, it's our policy, we wanted to get the board's feeling on us.
It's still our policy.
That's fine with me. I just want to, I didn't want to make the decision myself.
And I think even when we talked about the policy, we said we would be open to doing proclamations, so. I'm.
All right, so Paul, what we'll do for the next meeting is maybe include the proclamation they sent to us.
Okay.
George, are you good with that?
Absolutely. And I think you're making the right decision, because once we, once we make an exception, then we're, we're gone. You might as well, you have no role anymore.
Okay, so that brings us, the next item is the, uh, letter to the governor, bake requests in local COVID nineteen vaccination clinics, Pat?
Um, sure, I'll take this. We've, we've heard, well, I've, I've heard of several communities, uh, that have sent letters to the governor trying to convince him and the other people that make these decisions to allow the local boards of health to continue providing, um, COVID vaccine. It, it seems like three or four months ago, there was this, this big effort by the governor to get local boards of health to set up to do that. And they took a lot of time. I know Sue Rosa, I mean, she worked so diligently on that. I mean, I remember, you know, coming in town hall and people telling me, yeah, she's been working, you know, sixty, eighty hours a week trying to, trying to get everything set up so it would meet all the requirements that they had. And then they get to do, you know, a few of these clinics. And all of a sudden, the governor says that we don't want you doing that anymore. And it, it just seemed, you know, so deflating, I guess you could say, to the people that, that have worked in those clinics. You know, like Lisa said, Lisa Maroni, she's been working the clinics. I know Paul has, I know Christina has and, and Steve Mathetone, all these people from the town offices have, have put in a lot of time. They've gone through the training. They've, they've gotten the shots themselves. They, they make themselves available when they have the clinics. And just to pull the plug on them is just, I thought, you know, disrespectful at the very least. So, um, and especially given, I read in the paper today that on Wednesday, I think the, uh, school unions and I believe firefighters unions are going to try to encourage the governor to allow firefighters to vaccinate all the teachers in the school. Of, you know, uh, staff. I think it's, I think it's a really good idea. I think it's a way to, um, to get to more people because I'm not going to go to Fenway Park. Well, I actually have my appointment for tomorrow, so I'm not going to go to Fenway Park, but I wouldn't go to Fenway Park. Even if, you know, if that were the only place that I could get it, I probably would not go. And a lot of people aren't going to go to the mass vaccination clinics for, for whatever personal reasons. But having the option to do it here locally, I think really benefits everybody. And, you know, like I said, I, I mean, I, I wanted to, to indicate to the people that have taken all this time to get this up to speed and make it a successful, you know, a successful process. The people I've talked to in town that have come to, uh, town offices to get their shot, I'll say it was just, it went so smoothly. It was done so professionally, um, didn't hurt. So I, I don't know, everybody's so disappointed that, that they can't do it anymore. And I think if we can do anything to try to, um, change their mind, that we should do that. So that's where this came from.
Any other comments?
I, I don't understand why this letter wouldn't be sent by the Board of Health or wouldn't, or they wouldn't co-sign it. I, I just, I, I mean, I, I, I hear everything you're saying and I agree with everything you said about the effort that was put in. This board has had absolutely nothing to do with the execution of the town operations during COVID. It's all been with the Board of Health, the town manager and the superintendent of schools. And I don't know, I feel some level of discomfort just signing this off without at least having the Board of Health weigh in on it. Um.
Well, they, they did. It was, it was sent to Sue Rosa and she, she actually, she made some edits. I mean, maybe they would.
I think they should, so I'm sorry, say again, Ken.
Maybe they should also send one. I mean, I, I guess I would be okay with that. I think as the, the chief elected officials, it, it was done to show our support for our Board of Health. So it's not just the Board of Health saying, look, we were great and we did all these wonderful things. But, you know, I, I think, you know, Ken and George, I think both of you have mentioned about how effective, you've heard how effective the, the clinics were that.
I, I have, I have two, Pat. We were also getting a hundred doses at a time because of supply issues that have nothing to do with anything we have any control over.
Right.
You know, and the Board of Health has a partnership with Lowell General, which I hear that system is working very well. So I, I don't know, I just, I, I feel a little bit uncomfortable just signing this unilaterally without the Board of Health. At least being a co-signatory on it.
I think it would be helpful if the Board of Health did sign it with us, uh, and, and we heard from Sue Rosa with some input, but I also, I don't like us getting involved in some of the state-type level signing off. I mean, we've had a few issues in the last couple of years that we sidestepped or didn't sign on with. But I don't know. Yeah, I, I'd want to hear from Board of Health too, to, to see.
I agree.
Be helpful or.
I definitely agree, Ken. I mean, it's a purview, really.
And I, I mean, I understand, Pat, you wouldn't go to Fenway, but I hear from other people who have gone to the state sites and speak very highly about it. It doesn't make, it doesn't make this right, but I, I don't know. I'm just, I'm not comfortable signing this off without the Board of Health.
We, could we maybe have them at the next meeting to talk about it and then see if they'll maybe joint sign this with us?
Yeah, or at least have somebody meet with them and discuss it, whenever.
Well, like I said, I know Sue Rosa, she made some edits. It was, it was sent to her and she did, you know, did make some edits.
Uh, but you should at least, we should at least have Sue and Eric here.
Okay.
All right, um, so. That will go to, uh, our April select board meeting schedule. So Paul, do you need us to do anything with this or is this just a suggestion or?
Yeah, I need, we, we have no meeting scheduled beyond the end of this month. And I think the one that always gets sticky is the reorg meeting. Is it the Wednesday or the Thursday? You know, and rather than having confusion, um, you know, we should obviously post it in advance. And then obviously with town meeting being postponed, the deliberative session of town meeting, uh, you know, and beyond, you know, then, then the meeting schedule, you know, would be basically back to the, you know, every other week, which would be the Monday after the election and then two weeks later on the twenty-sixth, which would have been the first night of town meeting session. So, um, so yeah, I think, I think if the board would approve the meeting schedule, again, the one that is, is a little uncertain was the reorg meeting. You may recall that in the past non-pandemic years, the school committee would come down and, you know, people would be sworn in and so forth and, and, you know, now that obviously is not going to happen, but it would seem to me that, you know, given the situation that if you did that on the Thursday, you know, at least makes the next day, the, the day after the election, the Wednesday a little less hectic. So again, this would, whatever the board prefers in terms of schedule.
But I think, um, Frish prefers that we do it on, on Thursday also. So just to be, just in case there's any, you know, issues with, with the election on Wednesday that she has, we're up.
And then if for, and then if for some reason the pace of town meeting or whatever, if we need the extra meeting in April, we can always decide that. Yeah, I'm okay with the schedule, Paul.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the November sixteen, twenty twenty, select board minutes.
Second.
A motion, second, all in favor, I roll call, Pat?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Uh, we'll start the liaison reports. Pat, do you have anything for us?
Uh, yeah, just have, uh, one, one thing I wanted to, uh, tell everybody about. The library has, um, decided on their one book for twenty twenty-one. And it is called How to Be a Good Creature by Cy Montgomery. It's a very easy read. You could probably get through it in two and a half or three hours. They have multiple copies at the library right now. You can pick up, um, take your time to read it. And the, um, the author, Cy Montgomery, who lives just in New Hampshire, is going to be part of a presentation, uh, via Zoom on April twenty-first. And if you want to sign up to that, uh, that presentation, you can do that through the library. So hope everybody reads it. Good book.
Great, thank you. That's it?
That's it.
All right, uh, George?
All said.
Virginia?
Yep, um, back to the candidates' night. I have late breaking news that the Republican Town Committee is tentatively planning their candidates' night for Thursday, April first at the Chelmsford Police Department, where masks and social distancing will be required. Um, from the school committee, the school department is working on a plan to increase in-person learning time for the students. The first step would likely be to change Wednesdays from a remote day to an in-person day starting on March seventeenth. And then they are looking at other changes, which include moving to a full-day hybrid schedule and eventually a five-day week in-person schedule. Um, from the Conservation Commission, the Community Preservation Committee approved thirty thousand dollars for the Warren Pole Reservation for a parking lot off of Boston Road and signage, and that request will go to town meeting. And also from the Conservation Commission, DPW's Stormwater Management Department is doing a number of annual stream cleaning projects. So if you are a homeowner whose property abuts the streams or the wetlands, they're strongly encouraging you to keep your yard waste accumulated out of the streams and out of the wetlands because it interrupts the normal flow of water and creates flooding areas. The Finance Committee is continuing their budget in town meeting warrant article reviews on Thursdays, with the exception of the first Thursday of the month. And the Planning Board has three public hearings on their agenda this Wednesday. A continued public hearing for the town meeting warrant articles regarding center village parking, fulfillment centers and marijuana establishments. A public hearing for two forty-eight Princeton Street, which is the former Glenview site for a ten-unit multifamily development. And, um, a special permit for thirty-nine North Road with respect to, uh, non-conforming use to construct a two, new two-family home on the property. Um, the next Roberts Field Committee meeting is this Thursday, March eleventh. And if you have public input questions, you can submit them in advance by emailing questions@robertsfield.org. And the Vinyl Square Strategic Plan Committee next meeting is Tuesday, March ninth at seven PM and they welcome all participants.
Okay. Uh, thank you. I have, uh, I don't have anything to convey, so with that, we will take press questions, but, uh, unless two members here with the press, we don't have anybody else here, so. I don't see any notes. All right. With that.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor, I roll call, Pat?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Everybody have a great night.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.